All right, you good Bill? All right, I will start this regular Grand County Commission meeting at four thirty on Tuesday, the nineteenth of August, twenty twenty five, and we will, let's see, President Commissioner Hadeen, Commissioner Hadler, Commissioner McCurdy, Commissioner McGann, Commissioner Martinez, Commissioner Ambleson, myself, Commissioner Honville, and we will stand for the podium.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic which stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in the best of all.
Well, before we start the citizens to be heard, I've got a three different items that I'd like to update on. The first one being is that item number fifteen, the CUP, conditional use permit for Randy's medal has been moved to the next agenda due to a request from the applicant. That one will not be heard. I don't know if we had people here to speak about that one. We are also pulling item number twelve, appoint interim planning and zoning administrator from the agenda of this meeting. And also regarding number fourteen, we will be discussing and likely accepting number fourteen, the audit findings regarding financial statements that were presented to the audit committee at yesterday's meeting. Our external auditor has a scheduling conflict, is unable to present. Tonight, he did present yesterday to, oh, let's see, six out of the seven of us commissioners, so all were present for that. All edits and additions recommended to the auditor at yesterday's meeting have been made and are included in the audit for acceptance by the commission tonight. Don Hatterley from Larson's will present the audit for the benefit of the public at the next commission meeting on September, September second. And if anybody would like, there's a recording of yesterday's audit committee meeting, it's available on, for the public on the county's YouTube channel. So anybody can go back and look at that if they would like to. And so with that, I think we are ready for citizens to be heard. If we have folks, Charlotte, first one with your hand up.
Let's take over the microphone here.
Either one, and please, we try to keep it to three minutes, introduce yourself, and either one.
Charlotte, sit that microphone.
Okay.
Yeah.
My name is Charlotte Mates. I'm a citizen of Grand County for thirty years now. And tonight, this afternoon, I first of all want to thank the commissioners for your long days. I know they don't always get easy. We do appreciate, I appreciate it as a citizen that you can take the responsibility. I am here today because approximately a year ago, the Utah Alzheimer's Organization approached the Grand Center staff, one of their board members came in and asked if they could come in and present, if there was any need in our community for Alzheimer's awareness and education. And you already set it up so that they would come in, the coffee and tea, and present for an hour. And a young woman named Raven Albertson came in and there were twenty people in the room. And instead of starting her presentation, she began by going around the room and asking each individual person why they were there. Of the twenty people in the room, eighteen of them had a family member or dear friend with the signs of Alzheimer's dementia. Raven has come back several times, and she's coming tomorrow for the third time. I thought this was a great chance and opportunity to get this before the public as well as to let you know, and I'll leave this flyer if anybody wants to take a picture of it or whatever. But tomorrow from one to three P M., that it's Alzheimer's Association Empowered Caregiver, August twentieth, one to three P M., communicating effectively, and it will be at the Grand Center. And just an F Y I., there are two social workers, Terry Galen and Gail Jenkins Patterson, who have started a support group twice a month on the second and fourth Friday of the month, from four to five P M., where the caregivers who do a fabulous job, and just to put a little plug in, I'm hoping that we, as a community, can come together and find a way to get an assisted living facility in our community. We don't want to see our loved ones have to leave to go and be cared for, and we have to travel three and four hours to visit them. So thank you very much for your time and attention, and let's hope that we all keep as safe and as thoughtful and as considerate of one another as we can. Thank you.
Thank you, Charlotte. We have anybody else? Yes, please.
So, um, just recently, yeah, up until just recently, we had.
Introduce yourself.
I'm sorry.
Those offline.
Yes, a hundred percent. My name's Scott Sawley, I'm a citizen here at Grand County, and I just wanted to get clarification on the, what was previously item fifteen. It was stated that on the, the CUP, that you were, that you were moving it until September second, but that we could comment at this meeting and have our comments be noted on the record. Is that still a possibility?
That's the CUP for item number five.
Fifteen, at fifteen forty, Spanish Valley Drive.
Yes, yes. Um, you're, you're welcome to speak on any subject, it's citizens to be heard, so.
Well, I wasn't going to be in town for the next meeting, and I just wanted to, uh, as a resident of that neighborhood, just kind of voiced my opposition to bringing in basically what I feel is like industrial, commercial activity into a residential neighborhood. I was, I've been there for ten years, a little longer, and I do remember when they were there working as a commercial business, and I, I found it odd, and then I had basically found out that, in fact, it was operating illegally. And I just wanted to merely just voice my opposition, and that's about it.
Thank you, sir. Yes, please.
All right. My name is Shirley French, and I'm here about the zoning change or CPU to the Randy Martin's metal shop. And I would like to voice my opposition to this. Um, probably a lot of you remember from meetings going back over the last three years. I'm adamantly opposed to this. It's a large lot residential neighborhood. I've lived there for thirteen years now. And again, this type of large metal fabrication shop does not fit in our neighborhood. And I'm just dreadfully afraid that we all have all the same issues that we have had over the last two and a half, three years. Um, I'm not going to be available next week either. I can't believe that. I wanted to state that right offhand. And will we be able to make comments online from, for the next meeting?
Yes.
Okay. But in the meantime, put me down as adamantly against allowing that. Thank you.
So noted. Thank you. Anyone else? Yes, ma'am.
Since I'm here, uh, my name is Samantha Derbyshire, Pollock Lotto Shuttles owner and Vice Chair of Grand County Trail Mix, and I wanted to speak on the Trail Ambassador Program. Uh, my business generates ninety nine point nine percent of our revenue directly from trails. And it is very important to protect and take care of our trailings, and that is what the Trail Ambassador Program does. Uh, they have over thirty five thousand interactions with people, providing info and education to trail users. Um, in doing so, they direct folks to trails suited to their abilities. They make sure they are properly prepared, have plenty of water and snacks, and they educate them on trail etiquette, among other things. All of this, among other things, preserves the integrity of our trails, reduces the need for search and rescue, and so much more. As I've said before, our product is the vast landscape and recreational activities that the landscape attracts, and we do need to take care of it. And I think that the Trail Ambassador Program has been a success. It's one of the worst. Um, there was an entire, um, class provided at the Utah Trails Conference this year on how to create a Trail Ambassador Program in your town. So, um, it's trail basing, and we should take pride in that. And, um, yeah. Thank you.
Thank you. Next. Yes, sir.
Bob O'Brien, Castle Valley, speaking as a, uh, private citizen. I'm currently serving on the Grand County Planning Commission, have done so for about ten years. And I'm going to address the issue of Kristen Hofine and a bit about the Planning Commission. Hofine has done an outstanding, outstanding job as an acting planning and zoning administrator, and she's done so with very limited, uh, staffing. And I'm going to just give one example of the Planning Commission and what we're working on currently under the guidance of Hofine. The Planning Department was asked by the County Commission to consider a new zone, multi-family forty-five, uh, multi-fa-, multi-family residential forty-five zone. That means forty-five housing units per acre. This is twenty-seven housing units more per acre than any of the county's high, the current highest, highest density. That's kind of commercial, highway commercial, which is eighteen per acre. This is a major change that could be beneficial in the right area. But there's questions to be considered. Is this the right density for multifamily, or should it be multifamily residential thirty? That be more appropriate? Where, given current developments, our new general plan, the county's future land use plan, should such a development be allowed? What should the standards be for the zone in terms of heights, setbacks, the roads, given the traffic impacts of such a development, or fire department access? Many other design and location features need to be considered. Once planning and mapping are completed, should we have a workshop for the public to comment, make suggestions on a new zone? In considering this zone change at our last meeting, Kristen presented a draft outline, encouraged the sort of, this sort of discussion, and added crucially professionally to the discussion. Part of the work of a planning commission is to ensure that development aligns with community vision and goals while assessing public safety, environmental concerns, and the overall quality for residents. Hofine encourages, facilitates, and helps lead this work. I urge you to have her remain as the planning and zoning administrator. It is crucial. It's a crucial role. Thank you.
Thank you. Yes.
Hi, I'm Mary O'Rand, Grand County resident, and I, um, emailed you all four questions, and I just checked and still haven't received an answer from any of you. And it has to do with what was, um, agenda item twelve. And the four questions, and I still am going to try to pursue answers. One, what elements of Christine Hofine's work had prompted agenda item number twelve to replace her as interim planning and zoning administration straighter while a search for a permanent administrator is already underway? Two, were these work elements of job activities discussed with Chrissy at the behest of or with the knowledge of anyone on the Grand County Commission prior to consideration of replacement of her? Third, was the agenda item the first time that Christine learned that someone or the Grand County Commission was considering replacing her? And four, had a discussion regarding replacement of Chrissy Ben Hill among the county commissioners prior to placing consideration of her replacement on the agenda? So I really will appreciate getting answers to those. I'm trying to understand how these agenda items end up on the agenda with zero information and major consequences. Thank you.
Thank you. Next.
Hi, my name is Ashley Norman, granddaughter of Jim and Nola Walker. Um, I am dealing, or I'm here to request an amendment to the city's noise ord- ordinance to allow for protective barking by dogs in response to trespassing animals or people. Uh, we are dealing with a severe raccoon infestation in our area despite humane attempts to resolve it, trapping deterrent mechanisms. A problem has still persisted largely because the neighboring resident is feeding them, um, which supports a growing colony. These raccoons have caused over three thousand dollars in property damage and over a thousand dollars in vet bills for animals. Uh, additionally, we live to a property that is largely vacant, and they're dealing with a lot of trespassing. And we've had items stolen from our shed. Um, since we brought in a livestock, a livestock guardian breed dog with protective instincts, we've had zero incidents. Unfortunately, another neighbor has now filed complaints about the dog barking, um, which has tied directly to protecting our home ed pets. Um, in a tent to avoid a fine, we've kept our dogs furloughed inside at night. This arrangement has been, uh, for about five months now, and since then, the raccoons have roamed our vegetable garden, broken a dryer vent, and attacked my cat right on, on the porch. Uh, I'm requesting a reasonable exception to the noise pollution code for dogs barking in defense of property and safety, uh, consistent with our rights under Utah Code seven seventy-six to four hundred and six. And such ordinances have already been implemented in other Utah counties. For example, for example, severe county, uh, ordinance two thousand two eleven-one, uh, excessive noise ninety point zero zero six. Thank you for considering this amendment and allowing for us to talk.
Yes, and Cheryl, quick, are you in the city or the county?
County.
You're in the county, okay. Would you mind going around when you get a chance and leaving your contact information with the Dana Administrator, the next door down?
Thank you.
All right, thank you. Next. Anybody online? No? All right. Look light. No takers? All right, we will move on. Like, we are ready for our presentations. We have one from the Moab Area Community Land Trust. If you want to come, we're looking. Start us off.
We don't have any raccoons yet.
If any chairs are needed, just grab another chair.
I completely agree with the rest of the problem when I'm sitting.
Good afternoon. I'm Sherri Griffith, Chair of the Moab Area Land Trust.
Actually, right, I'm a board member of the Moab Community, County Land Trust.
And I am Caitlin Myers, Executive Director of the Community Land Trust.
So we're just here to update you because we work closely with the county and the city to guarding our housing issues, and they are certainly on the forefront. And recently there was a task force open house that discussed a lot of different issues and concerns. And we also realized that because what we do is so diverse and so unusual.
Can you, something, let me share screen.
We have a present date.
Right.
Well.
Thank you, Gary.
That, so it's so diverse of what we've been doing that we wanted to update everybody and, and the new people, I think, started this last year, didn't have the luxury of having some of that education. So, yeah.
Should be good.
Thank you, Glenn.
Give you an update. So when you are asked questions, mostly by citizens and outside people, that you have the answers of what we've been doing. We, the land trust started in twenty twelve. It got funding and support in twenty eighteen by an individual who donated the land, forty-two acres. And the, the had, uh, Newmarket Tax Credit Loan for us to build the infrastructure. So it was all within, we had no outside tax dollars. It was all alone. And we created a nonprofit corporation, and the first couple of years was run specifically by volunteers at that nonprofit. There's absolutely no outside people hired or, or money spent on that. Over time, of course, as we grew, we needed to do more. But if you could, um, you just show us the site plan? So, everybody is, probably everybody at some point is, this is a review. There's the, um, orientation. Here's Spanish Valley Drive. Here's what we call Bonnie's Way, and goes out to the highway. Does that kind of give everybody?
Bonnie's Way is where synergy is on.
Okay. Well, we got close to it. And the development is one of the largest, largest in the state, by the way, and it is one of the largest in the nation. And we were, uh, very excited to have lots of help in putting it together. But as you'll see, the cool thing is that we have single family homes in ownership. We have twin homes in ownership. Those brown buildings are our apartments that are rentals, and we have one, two, three, even some four bedroom rentals in the form of town, actually townhomes. There's, uh, kind of the rust colored, they go along Spanish Valley Drive, are townhomes. The little yellow ones at the bottom are individual houses for rentals. So about half of the program or the project is rentals and half is ownership. And, um, we did that just to try and have something for everyone. Because we have everything from people that, uh, are paraprofessionals to people that have families that struggle. And that the goal is to have some of the public. We are median income ranges from seventy percent to a hundred and twenty percent in there so that we have some variety. The, we currently, I think, pretty impressively, have a, uh, have almost a hundred homes already built in five years. They're already in there. And we, when I say we built, we use developers. We put the land under, we support the developers, we support the, the build out, we come up with the dream, the plan. And so we have, okay, ninety-six occupied homes. We have eighty-five going in form of, we have apartments, twin homes, townhomes. And in the end, we'll have another, I've got a nineteen when the project is completely built out. So we'll have over three hundred housing units for people, which, what's that, six, seven hundred people? And the, the way that it's set up is that it, they get a hundred year lease. So that's why it's a land trust, because we put the land under them. For the donation and from our Newmarket Tax Credit money, we're paying back. But we hold the land in trust. And the reason we do that, it's a hundred year with a hundred year renewal. The reason we do that is because then we can de-restrict, and that's how we keep it affordable in this town. So we restrict it by you have to work here, or you have to work here five out of ten years and retire here. You have to make a certain amount of income. And when you go to sell it, you can't just flip it to Aspen. You have to keep it within the workforce. You have to keep it within this price range so that it can become permanently attainable to the next person down the road. And that's the piece that Grand County was really missing for a long time. USDA self-build, you could build it, and then you could flip it to anybody. And so what, nothing was staying in attainable housing, um, industry, you know? And we were losing all of the, all of the, that what we thought we were gaining, we were just losing again.
And to be honest, this is not just a Grand County issue. Right? We understand that this is a country-based issue. Um, and so that is one thing that we've come to the table. I have been on a lot of boards to help talk about grants, and I just, I really want to tell you guys that for me, I really thought it was only about a Royal Crossing. I know we've had a lot of conversation individually about that this was a Royal Crossing. That's what I thought, was under the assumption of that. When I came to the table and started talking to the board and what their dream is and what they have accomplished so far, it became a big reality to me that this is how my kids will get to live here. This is how they'll get to afford living here. Because it is a joke. I've watched so many friends with older teenagers in high school, they're going, huh, I mean, I guess I can live in this rundown trailer with six people. How do we keep this permanently attainable for the next generation, for our children, for our workforce, which is what made me join the board? Watching what we've accomplished and proving it, Caitlin has been invited to go to Washington and teach people how to do this. We have surrounding counties, people in the state, they want to know what we've accomplished because we've proven it can be done.
Well, what's great about, so here's what's great about it, is it's collaborative, right? It's taken the county, taken the cities, individuals, everybody here, the board, then the individual people who that have come in and supported us, you know, it's, it's a vision that people can see as being attainable and permanent. And where we're at now, as we've proven that we can do rental apartments and townhomes and individual self-filled, and we've done a little bit of all of it, so that we're pretty much set in our plan with what we're doing, that we are ready to take on what's next. What do we need to do next? And how can we help, um, take all this knowledge we've garnered and apply it to the next project? So what's, we're, what we are hoping is that you can come back to us and say, here's some of the things we need to look at, here's some directions we need to go so that we can take this expertise and multiply it to the rest of the county.
And honestly, we want Grand County to be the example for the rest of the country of how to do it. And now, like, you guys have supported us, and we appreciate that support. We, we definitely wanted to show our gratitude and that we're so grateful for the support that we've gotten from the county and from the state and also the federal government. Um, but we, we know how much we can do and what we can create for the future of our county, for the future of our community and citizens. And we want the, the way to be, do it like Grand County. So partnerships with you guys of figuring out, you know, liaisons on our board and what's next, what's needed. We know there's a lot of apartments going up, so it's not the next step for a single family where our focus needs to be. And so having a partnership with you guys helps us understand the need so we can go after it. We just want to say thank you so much. We also are very available. We have a really great board, um, always willing to meet and answer questions. We're developing a good partnership with Desert Rivers and working on, on different funding partnerships with that. And we want to talk about this because we can't do it alone.
Speaking of that, we have five board members here.
We do.
So.
All right.
Do a quick stand.
And.
Let's see the board member.
And these are, these are all volunteer positions. We really appreciate everything. But, uh, we meet monthly and spend a whole lot of time on it. We're pretty dedicated to making sure that, uh, citizens have housing right here in Moab. It's our goal.
Do you have any questions?
Guys, it made a big difference. It's, yeah, very apparent. Thank you for all the hard work and I think exemplary project has been.
It's been a good one. Mary, you have a question?
I just have a comment. I, I really want to point out Audrey and Sherri. Uh, they have been here from the beginning. Yet, they made it through some really scary and rough times where we didn't know, unsure if this was going to come to fruition. They stuck with it. We stuck with it. I will, I am proud to say it was the county that made it, allowed the final jump, the final leap that created this. And I'm proud as a commissioner and proud as a county that we were such an integral part of it. But I especially want to acknowledge you, the two ladies who had the dream, stuck with it, and kept it going. And the people would step forward. Stuck with it and kept it going. And the people who'd let's step forward. And helped through so many ways. Thank you.
Um, I drive by it every day on my way home and it's just, it's. Like, just heartwarming when I see yards blossoming and kids riding their bikes. And it's a community. And it's, it's just awesome. I, I can't tell you enough of how proud I am of your work. So, thank you.
And it didn't take, you know, it, it didn't take a lot of money out of people's pockets. You know, we made it pretty self-sustainable and affordable. And I think that's something that is, I think, impressive for this project to lose it. I mean, Grand County didn't have to open their pocketbook. We had to do it within. That's not always true in other uh tourist towns.
And I do want to thank Chris Baird. I remember Chris saying. We should pump some money into, so I do want to thank him for, for having that, that thought.
They, yeah, he funded the, the executive director position for the first year and then we take it over from there. And, and um, you know, it, it, that's, we have over a fifty million dollar project out there right now and it's all done. It'll be a hundred and fifty million. Said done and done, pretty much. In ROI, probably eighty-five percent, you know, I think. And it took everybody jumping in there, contributing and supporting. So I appreciate that.
So we want to know what's next for you guys.
This goes to our, our city counterparts too, but I know the county is, is looking uh to partner and to. Help you guys find that next project. I, I hope the totality of the city is also uh not to lean on my counterparts down there. But uh, uh, if the city and county are behind you, we should one hundred percent be. Uh, partner with you guys and get more houses on ground. Been building quite a few shelves out there for some of your shelves. It's always nice to stop by your X Y S house.
Thank you. Um, speaking totally as an apple, not going to touch the city, but um. We, we are also as an organization that we talk to the city about this.
Yeah.
Yes, they did all of this. Working on a lot of partnerships, as we know, it's so important.
I want to thank all of you ladies for coming in and the board that so. Been about supporting you and being here for sure. I was at the, what was that, the task force we had the other night? And I know there's ongoing. Conversations, I was part of one about finding the next piece of property. So I, I look forward to it. There's options around and. I need to just keep moving it forward.
Yeah, and, and decide what is it that we need.
Right.
Right? Do we need the eighty to a hundred and twenty percent AMI? Do we need rentals? Do we need homes? Do we need family homes? Now, individual, you know, apartments. So I think that's our, we need it all. Reality is, it's like, what chunks of land can we do it? And we carefully, um. You know, compartmentalize each of these projects so that they're, they're, we can take it and apply it to the next project. Because there is such a variety, diversity in what we've done. And we, we have enough knowledge. There's no reason to reinvent the wheel. Let's just take it to the next thing. And we've done enough now that we feel like, you know, such a big project, we didn't feel like we could take on anything else until we made sure this was super successful. But we're at the point now we can start planning for that next one.
And we would love a county liaison on our board if anyone would be so willing, because it would help keep the communications, lines of communication open. Be awesome.
Very good. All right.
Hey, thank you.
Thank you.
Moving to our update from the IT department.
Hello, everybody. I'm Matt Semeseros. If you don't know, I'm the IT director here at the county. The microphone there, there's microphones there, one here, we all have microphones. We're gonna sit. I might stand up, I don't know.
Biggest improvement since I've been on the commission.
Yes, but it's always good to be heard. Absolutely. I didn't prepare like a long exasperated, exasperated speech. Those of you that have been on the commission for a little while, you've heard me come up in front of you and talk to you a couple of different times. Year over year, I try to give you a good overview of what my department does. It's a lot of taxes. Um, I did that this year as well, but then I massaged it with God. Because it's my disclaimer. Um, so the piece that you have in yours is a summary of my overall. Fifteen hundred word report that I'm not going to exasperate or word. Um, I don't really get into presentations very much because you don't want to see a bunch of pictures of. Urban computers and wires and antennas and. All sorts of, you know, help desk tickets or pieces. Uh, but I'm always happy to come back and give you any kind of input that you're interested in as far as uh. Any kind of numbers, if you're interested on, you know, uh. Spam filters or cyber attacks or, and this kind of stuff. These are not topics that I'm going to discuss in an open meeting. Um, but um, we're in a good state as far as security and, and those items are concerned. Uh, but you know, it's just an open door. I'm always happy to answer everybody's concerns or questions. Um, to that end, I'm just going to kind of run through my refined overview of the thing. If you didn't know, I'm the IT director again. Within my department, I believe in mission statements and goals. Um, it's something I think that is, you know, critical to review every year. Um, this is the same I came up with. This really hasn't changed a whole lot in the. This is my sixteenth year here. I've been here for a while. Um, but is to provide reliable, robust and integrated technology to improve the county's ability to serve its residents. My overall goal with that is to deliver solutions that improve efficiency, accessibility and the security of communications and data. Couple of sentences that really goes down into all fifteen hundred. To all the various categories that's on touch here. Within my scope as the director, uh, I have several different staff members. Um, at this point, yeah, thank you very much for approving those positions. As we go along, technology is, you know, an integral part with everything that we do, everything we do on the daily. But one of the people I do have is our GIS specialist. Uh, he's proven to be on many, many different times, a critical part of being able to get you. Data, analytic data, you know, some of the maps. He's been a huge help within. Works out this and getting. Drawings and everything turned over in a timely manner, ensure that it's accurate. Uh, so we're able to provide a better product quicker, it's more accurate to everybody. Show information out to the public as needed. Um, just a big shout out to him. He uh is got named to be a co-chair. On the Innovation Committee for HUGIC. And HUGIC is the Utah Geographic Information Council. Um, it's a bunch of IT people, but they're all GIS mapping related. Um, it's a good group of people to be in, uh, him being in the innovation group actually speaks pretty loudly for. Uh, what he's been able to just paint with. Everything that comes out of that position, uh, feed up to the state. Um, so we're the collector or the aggregator. Uh, so in terms you see, you pull up your phone and you reference a map and any kind of give away. Address or any of those types of things, just know that those pieces will be initiated and cross-checked and otherwise before they put up to the services that you enjoy. So. All that definitely starts here with the local tech. Um, just a big shout out to James. Appreciate it. But you know, by and large, the responsibilities of the IT. Is that we, I'm not your administrator by anybody, I need to stretch the, like, any stretch of the imagination on anybody's database. Um, it's not because we don't know how to administer databases. But I don't run your department either. So each uh office department, otherwise it has a database. So they have a master supervisor that's responsible for all administration pieces. Everything else with makes that system work, all wires, all that other stuff, that's where IT comes in. So all the procurement that goes along with it, installation, maintenance, security. As well as planning and whatnot, that goes over all the computers, endpoints, devices. Yeah, the different platforms and whatnot that we utilize on the daily here. Uh, also deeply involved with the sheriff's office on the daily. Public safety hazard point that we have here. We've been able to migrate to a lot of different things with the state. I'd be happy to discuss any one of these particular items. Um, so at a really cool point now where it's a statewide system. Uh, and it's including, I don't know, as well as radio. Uh, it's really improved the communication coverage. Back end, but we still, there are some gaps. The websites, email, commerce and systems, software. Cybersecurity, privacy is another big one that I got handed this year. That's a, gonna be great. And uh, just overall, you know, disaster recovery, data analytics. Um, just a couple of highlights, uh, like, uh, we do hire assist admin. Well, approved that position last year. Thank you very much. Um, having that position, we weren't able to fill that. That really allows for a much faster response time. It frees me up to be able to actually focus on some more of these overarching pieces to make sure that all of the, all the pebbles are tended to. Um, we've upgraded uh several of our core services, servers rather, a bunch of the networking hardware. Uh, still a bunch of things that will still need to be upgraded. There's only twenty five workstations replaced this year. Say only because we've been, and this is a reflection from all staff, our departments. Everybody's really been trying to contract a little bit more, trying to get some more life out of. Their endpoint computers and whatnot too. So this number is a little bit lower than what I typically see. Um, on the daily, we run right around two hundred workstations. So every year I typically just expect about thirty five, forty of those to be replaced. I have a rotation schedule that goes throughout endpoints, all those things too. But just want to note that out that people are being very budget. GIS to talk a little about before, James, what he's doing. You know, the big completion that was, that happened this year is that. We're able to get the LiDAR mapping through the Moi Valley done. You don't know what LiDAR is? It's light imaging detection and ranging. Um, IT, we deal with lots of factors. It's ridiculous. I can remember some of these some days. But it uh, if you're familiar all a little bit with this process, I hope, why have we did all of this? Um, but it's really cool to be able to have it pre-flood and post-flood because we have data from. Twenty nineteen, twenty nineteen. And right now, we're working with the Sultan to aggregate data uh from not only that LiDAR information. Um, but a bunch of different advanced modeling techniques uh to potentially. Put out a, a bit of an advanced oriented system, all of that. And it's, it's pretty tricky. I've not spent a lot of time going into it. Kate Finley, the emergency manager is definitely involved in it. This is something that was set up through Cora and otherwise isn't. But it's really, really cool how that's uh being played out. We're one of the. Kind of a beta tester, if you want to call it that. Uh, the state's involved with this effort as well. It's kind of a national type of thing I'm looking at. How can we make this better? I still am on uh the Cybersecurity Commission for the state of Utah. I'm the UAC appointed member of that commission. That's a government or governor's commission. Initially, we were created through legislation to be able to deal with handful of federal monies and whatnot. It's, I'm not going to say morphed, but it's grown uh in responsibilities and scope. I, as being the little guy in the room, uh, I really try to advocate for smaller entities, smaller agencies. Because legislation comes out that dictates. That all government agencies within Utah have to abide by various levels of privacy and security. And a lot of these agencies just don't have any kind of technical breadth to be able to deal with it. So I'm continuing to keep doing that. Um, you know, throughout, throughout my time there, Utah Cyber Center has been created. There's a lot of uh. Great tools that are being offered to, again, the little guys and the big ones as well. I mean, all of those together, actually. One of the things we say to cybersecurity, is cybersecurity is better when we play as a team. As long as we all play together, right? And we all talk and we'll fight against the same guy. Um, but if we're not talking, I can get the fact here, but my neighbor doesn't even help. So we all try to be as best we can. As you said, I, I can go on on any one of these particular points here. Uh, I'm not going to bore you with a whole bunch of, of terms on them. Um, but I do have some other projects about, you know, just expanding network. Um, finalizing, expanding more of these core uh servers. Uh, really drilling down into access management, privacy program, talk about that a little bit. We'll see back up here very soon with the privacy policy. However, that's where we're, uh, we're going to make this all official. Upgrading phones, data circuits, AI usage and its policy. That's going to be a big focus on the upcoming over the year. And within those two pieces, within the privacy program, AI. One of the pieces I'm looking at very particularly is our third-party tech stack. I call it a tech stack. But once upon a time, kind of pre-COVID, right, I was able to know exactly where all my computers are, my servers are all here. Everything's kind of proliferated. I don't know necessarily where anybody's working. That's great sometimes. But within that, we've also kind of, I'm not going to say shot ourselves in the foot, but we've committed ourselves as a county. To purchasing a number of different third-party services that do different pieces. And I'm not going to get into specifics on a lot of these. But as I'm finding these, you know, I have concerns, one from the privacy standpoint. Of the data records, all those fun things go into it. Part of being the administrative officer for data privacy. Is that I have to create a whole schedule that goes over all these record series, over collecting data in any kind of way. And has, whether it has personal information or not, I need to make sure that data classification is handled. Part of us, I go through that. I know I'm going to find multiple different platforms that we have. That are being either underutilized, not utilized. And it costs us a pretty penny. A lot of these cases are at cloud service, SaaS solutions. Things that are easy to buy, be able to buy. It gives a great salesman, easy sale, particularly when you have something to come back on. Just uh, these are some of the folks that I'm going to be really looking at next year. So, next report. I can all guarantee anyone come in and say, there's a number of things here. If you guys really want to start, start talking about money and cutting. Without getting down into the nitty-gritty of operations. There's a number of, you know, third-party services and things that we're paying for right now that are not even being used. And they're coming up for renewal very quickly. There's, there's one right now that's in for different pieces that. It's twenty five grand. There's so many of these different types of services that are costing the county money. I want to make sure that we're getting a holistic. I'll stop jabbering on the last piece that I will ask though. Um, it's again, in conjunction with the Utah Cyber Center. With the Utah Cyber Center and again with, with my advocacy for smaller agencies and otherwise, like I said, it's all works better as a team. Um, there is a letter, a consent agenda. And the letter is pretty self-explanatory. Um, it's part of a bit of a grassroots effort from other IT directors and whatnot across the state. Um, it's kind of being led by a fellow named Josh Provo. Um, and all it is, is looking for your support in sending this letter that they've drafted. Back to the cyber center and to the commission or of the Cybersecurity Commission and state legislature, governor. Any other kind of somebody that we can. Used to benefit, be able to get funding for this. Uh, that's what that letter really is about. It doesn't cost the county anything. It's just uh. Seeking continual fund, funding for the Utah Cyber Center and talking about all the good things that it is. So I'd ask that you consider that as you go through. If you don't, I can understand that too. I'll be going to UAC. I'll be going to UAC. Actually, you got you. Um, but I really would love your questions. So send myself off. Yes.
I'd love to see a list of those uh third party services that even in your opinion, if they're if they're low usage or and cost, if you have them, even on that. Uh, they're coming up on these dates that that is important information. We're entering budget season, you know, uh, but that would be why.
Yeah, I I totally anticipate having that. I don't have a list ready for you. Um, I have a number of things I can give you. Uh, but that's certainly one of my goals is to have that for budget fund this year. I do.
Uh, thank you.
And I think that would go to admin and he could maybe reach out to just make sure that no one else intends to use any of those programs, you know.
Oh, absolutely. No, and 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 as I go through this again, I mean, there's, there's a lot of it's not just me saying like, oh, hey, that's it. It's it's really like, does does the software actually do what we want to do? Is it being used? I'm not saying it's a bad software, you know, but if we're not using it and we're not doing it, what like? Why pay for it for a year? You know, I mean, let's catch, let's catch up and maybe we can come back into another year. But in all of these contracts too, uh, you know, part of it is one, one, once we get into it, right? Every year we need to review what those price models are, make sure that we're using effective contracts and everything else too. And Google's a perfect example where I pay for workspace every year. So it's a third party. It's a SAS solution. Um, but every year I only do it on one year agreements and I make sure that I'm leveraging back and forth between state agreements, making sure that my vendor is still qualified, that they're all grant certified too. So I'm dealing with security situations and whatnot. But it's just kind of one example of lots of different ones that are controlled kind of by the legal department, so to speak, if that makes sense. Yes. So does that answer your question?
Uh, continued voice from UAC has been cybersecurity for several years now. A to F, what's our grid in Grant County?
A death.
A to F. Are we passing or?
AF, um, you know, when, when you start looking at modeling for cybersecurity, uh, nobody's ever gonna be A.
Yeah.
And most people are not gonna be an F, even if they're completely informal and it's just one person. What I would put is is probably somewhere in a C.
Okay.
Which is a good place for me because it means that I'm not so bleeding edge that I'm forgetting what I'm doing behind. And it's progressed enough that I know kind of where a lot of the gaps are.
Okay.
I had a couple of questions. The cyber center, uh, the cyber central letter kind of describes. Is there a certain size that we'd be working with or would that be always? Uh, is it invited? Is it? So does it basically invite the larger communities in as well as the smaller communities and ensures the cost?
Uh, yes. Yes, the cost would be essentially funded through government or through the state government office, uh, like through government operations. So it's actually uh like a legislative funded model through their appropriation in that way.
So it's a it's a way basically for a smaller, a smaller community to have the same services that a larger community would have as well.
It it, yes, yes. And in a short answer, uh, but it even just gives them the ability to be able to access the resources. Uh, and and you're absolutely right. It's it's every way that legislation has been written. And that's part of what I keep coming to them is that they've come at it and said, it's every governmental entity. And this last year with legislative session, they went through really hard and they did a good job of trying to define a lot of things. Because it used to be any political subdivision state and now it's any government entity. Any political subdivision state still means all of our special service districts, everybody else too. Any given entity also starts including water boards and all sorts of things. It's something like twenty seven hundred entities just on the state of Utah. When they first started this whole thing with the cyber commission, otherwise you started doing, you know, trying to collect some of these little hanging fruit, so to speak. I mean, they sort of they looked at it initially as being just counties and cities. It's like three hundred and eighty three. And I speak of, it's like, well, what about all my special services that I have to some grand county? They all count. Right? Like that adds, that makes like twelve hundred and eighty or something like that. Then you start looking at what is a governmental entity and why is it that we have small guys down here that have no connection?
Past definitions, what's what are some of the concerns um of that working group for this uh interim legislation right now?
Well, so it starts with the working group.
They did just uh for what's going to be coming up in the next legislation.
The working group for this, for the one that you're signing as far as like just garnering support, particularly for the Utah Cyber Center. Is by and large, what we're looking at is providing resources really. Um, and a centralized uh reporting ability uh that's unique to Utah. Part one of this, I'll I'll mention trying to get out these on. But with all of the Doge things that's happened with Trump otherwise. There's been a number of different federal cuts, as you know, across the board. One of the ones that we've identified and it's all are what called ISAC, which ISAC for it's sharing analysis centers. And we rely on uh going for MSIs pretty pretty heavily here. Because they do a lot of different cool services, especially backed. It used to not be a thing to the perspective funded. Now they're pushing models that might be um, which is kind of defeating the purpose from a national level. In Utah, what our response to that is, is we look at and say, well, the MSIs, that's great. Now, we we can appreciate why it's there. But we can also have this model to where we can take care of ourselves. Good point. And so when we say model and and what we're focusing on, it's 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 exasperated. It's it's not just networking, make sure we're applying the same thing. It's also looking for funding to make sure that we have resources, things like endpoint detection and response. Uh, having qualified email services for, you know, small users. I'm like, it's advocating that's the value to be able to get a Google Workspace license that states providing at cost, you know, from this. Security training. Um, replacement end life equipment. But these, these, these are some of the the top ones, but in the cybersecurity world, we look at and say tho- those are kind of low hanging fruit. I can take care of all that really quick, but just now let's actually start focusing on frameworks. And that's, that's what, that's where the cool part for the cyber center comes in is that, yeah, we can take care of some of the low hanging fruit. But it's a whole lot better when we can envision the whole tree or the B I, right? Make sure that we can share this in response plans that we can work, work together collectively. That's the, does that answer your question? Abstract and.
Yeah, I just wanted to kind of get a better, a general overview of it.
All right. Thank you, Matt.
I tried to.
Thanks for sending out those spoof emails every once in a while.
Absolutely. Thanks for clicking on it.
I identify now. Those that I know that that was.
All right, we will. Um, do we have Izzy outside waiting? There she is. Thank you, Izzy. Come on in and I'd love to hear from you.
Um, so I have a PowerPoint presentation. Can you hear me?
We can't hear.
I have a PowerPoint presentation, but no laptop. It no longer turns on.
Is it in the? All right, you're gonna give me a minute.
I did bring some of this time.
You bring the sparkly sticker and I'm so excited. Thank you. Thank you. Be exciting.
Anything to cross out. Yeah. This is even fast as quick.
She was giving it a little way.
Uh, she's bringing me in, so it's important. I'm not gonna let it go full screen, but.
Dang, we might not get the.
Okay, well, I can hang on. I can't wait to see. That's as full screen as it can go.
Right. Well, well, um, my name is Izzy. I am the tweets department director slash supervisor. And this is my annual report. Perfect. So um, the overview for my part will be um background on noxious weeds, multi mine department structure, annual department cycle, uh, unnamed for my department. Um, our new facet of our department, which is the community wildfire defense grant, um, and funding that we've gotten through that for positions. Um, I'll talk about our partnerships, education and outreach, our challenges and accomplishments. So I usually give a really long overview of what an obnoxious weed is, but this time I shortened it down to one slide and essentially um, weeds are very subjective. These can just be native, non-native invasive. And it's just everything that you don't want, depending on context. An obnoxious weed is a legally recognized invasive, non-native plant uh that's listed on the state list. But each state has its own list. And so in the other, the smaller boxes I've listed, uh, some of the noxious weeds are here, excuse me, Tony. Not all of the state listed weeds are found here. These are priorities. Okay, so our department structure, um, we have a supervisor, which is me and I'm um funded by the general fund and we have a lead technician slash the crew lead who is also funded by the general fund. Um, the crew lead needs a crew of right now about four, well, two of them being full-time um weed technicians and two of them seasonal and all four of the technicians are grant funded. The full-time seasonal grant or the full-time invasive plant technicians are mostly grant funded. I believe that they're um inputs through being a full-time employee are general. Okay. And on the other side, we have the fuels reduction coordinator, which is a new position that we uh created this year um through the community wildfire defense grant that I will be talking later. Um, and that is fully grant funded up until twenty twenty. Um, the fuels technicians, there'll be about four of them under the fuels reduction coordinator. That is a position that I will request for next year, starting next year, and those will also be fully grant funded um up until twenty twenty nine. Um, our projects completely varied by time of year and weather. Outside in the elements, so this is kind of a brief overview of how each year looks for us. I'll just kind of give a brief overview. But in the winter, we do a lot of work on private property, being giant read at urban grass uh by digging with hand tools. It's pretty intensive. In the spring, we do a lot of uh herbicide treatments all over the county, mostly on public lands. The summer, we do a lot of goat heads, which is what we're doing right now. And also summer or July is the end of our fiscal year with the project partners that we work with. So the, you know, a lot of our grants and contracts end at the end of July and start over fiscal year in August. And then in autumn, we do a lot of winterization. So we get ready for the winter. A lot of private property treatments. I'm gonna do late season treatments of it's ready. And if anyone has. There's an overview of our funding. So we do have I make the general funds, but for county funded at a calendar year basis. Um, the rest of our funding is on the state fiscal year, which is again July through. Yeah, August through July. Um, and some of our funding or actually this is the Utah Department of Agriculture and Food, and that's an annual grant that I applied for. We have a five-year agreement with the Bureau of Land Management to work on BLM lands. We have an annual agreement with Department of Resources, Forestry, Department of State Lands, and that's a lot of river work. That's actually on the consent agenda, I believe, is that agreement. Um, we also partner with a lot of grant applications on the watershed restoration initiative platform, which is a Utah grant platform focused on watersheds. And I don't personally apply for them, but we are contacted through usually two or three per year. And then again, the community wildfire defense grant um is one that I will speak on a little before, um, but that is a five-year agreement of renewal annually, but for five years up until twenty twenty nine, and that is administered by a pretty true restoration. And then our least common funding is through private property treatments that are red funded. Uh, we do spray on private property. It's not often. Community wildfire event grant. We are participating agency in CWDG was applied for a return restoration, I believe in twenty twenty to me, marks for restoration. So um, we were allocated three hundred and seventy five thousand dollars over the next five years, and that comes out to be about seventy five thousand dollars per year for um personnel, um, equipment such as chainsaws, brush cutters, hand tools, herbicide equipment, and also truck leads. Again, we hired our fuels reduction coordinator in spring of twenty twenty five, so it's a pretty new position. And again, I will be requesting fuels reduction technicians uh this year to start in twenty twenty six. And this program, this facet of our department is brand new and uh, the focus is on how invasive plants specifically change fire patterns on wildfire and in urban fire. So it's a brand new facet and we are creating it as we go, but the goal is to create a robust resource for fire prevention and response with weed work. Does that make sense?
Yeah, yeah, it's all.
All right, moving on. And then this is another facet of the radar grant, which is the fire break campaign. This is from the Instagram, the fire break Moab Instagram, which I recommend everyone check out. Um, basically, this is again trying to become a resource for uh fire resilience within the Millam Pack Creek corridor specifically. So break stands for build resilience, ready property, engage community, act together and know how. It's a lot of different partners involved. Um, return restoration is the main partner in all of this, but we also work with Moi Valley Fire Department, um, the DNR, Foresty, Fire and State Lands. And the city of Millam, other departments within Grant County, such as Roseford. And this is very sad, um this was an awesome before and after picture where it faded out and gets to the after, but um unfortunately, my laptop no longer turns on again.
What did you say?
Oh, sorry, um this is a really cool before and after, where the first picture kind of fades out, and then you can see the. Really awesome work that um the Utah Conservation Corps did with rent term restoration and our crew. Um but. It won't work. And my laptop doesn't turn on, that was the last thing for that.
I can speak to the work that you guys did, there's a lot.
Thank you, yeah, I'm happy to uh share all those photos with you, they were taken by Sophia Fisher with Rent Term, and they're fantastic. Um a little bit about our partnerships, education and outreach. Um we have many partnerships throughout the state and including um Colorado State as well. We are. Part of the Utah Weed Supervisors Association, Southeastern Utah Repairing Partnership. The Middle Colorado Water Fed Cooperative Weed Management Area, which is a huge mouthful. MCRW CWA, and that is um. A partnership that crosses uh several counties and also state lines, many agencies. Um education and outreach, we have put in a lot of effort for um creating. Information flyers, you may have received these in the mail, we are refined a lot of this, as well as rent term restoration, um and a couple others of this. Yeah, these go to the mail, hopefully they'll help you um. You know, gather some knowledge about weeds, and if anyone has any questions, of course, you can reach us at our office. And then we um we participated in a lot of volunteer events, this is a picture from the Spring Spruce Up. Where we did a lot at this pipe park, and uh. We need to go back there, I did some of it recently, yeah, it's a forest. This is an awesome annual uh volunteer event, and we're very happy to participate in it every year. Um we are also hosting goat head and tumbleweed removal events at. Popular trailheads around this time of year, like updates on that, we post it on our Instagram, which is. Right now. Grant County Weed Department, no, Grant County Weed Debt. So. Um some challenges that we face, we work with a lot of different specialized tools, um. On the left hand, we have a. Freighter, and the blue is herbicide and blue dye. Pressurized um. Equipment that can. Make people wrong pretty quickly, and we do our best, maybe one, but they are old, and. They need a lot of uh work, and it's. Um in the middle, we have a saw, uh we're always ready to solve issues. All the work we do with chainsaws, and uh. On the right, we have a tool that we were just too strong for, or just digging too hard. Um again, these are more maintenance issues that we face, um equipment maintenance is a huge chunk of our budget, and we try and. Uh cover that cost when we can with grants and agreements, but a lot of it falls outside of what's allowed in. So. This is an essential part of our budget, we are constantly fixing things. Accomplishments. Uh that is the crew at the top, standing in front of the massive weed pile that we accumulated throughout the winter. All of that used to be on private property, um. It's a lot bigger than it's in the picture, but that is hosted at OSA, the Old Spanish Trail Arena, and each year we burn it, and it's awesome. And thank you to Angie for letting us dump our weeds there. And then. Uh the truck, I just had to throw out um a little rest in peace to our expediter, I mean expedition, that's what we called it, the expediter. Um it finally died this year, and uh we miss it terribly. So here's just some numbers, um I can read them out loud if you'd like, or I don't need to, we can just read it, but. We've done a tremendous amount of work around Grant County on private and public plants, and these numbers are taken from this past fiscal year, so. Around last August till about now. Yeah. And this is a slide specific to our river projects, we just finished um a purple loosestrife hunting trip. Uh started in Loma, and we worked with Mesa Academy. We went all the way down to Westwater, we did not go through Westwater, it was tied, but we will later this year. Um and we found about nine loosestrife plants, and. It's a very successful inter-agency. Project that we organize each year. This is a slide to pause and ask any, if you guys have any questions. Or comments. Were you able to hear me?
As well.
Okay.
More or less quiet, but.
Okay.
Personally, it's good to see you guys out uh tackling some tamarisk down at the portal. A month or two back, but that's all you got down there, so.
Thanks, yeah.
Guys being on the river, it's like, I like seeing you guys out there uh killing that tamarisk, so.
Yeah, we're trying, the beetles are also doing very well this time of year.
Yes.
See the browning, that's tamarisk beetle. Anything else?
Anybody?
Yeah, thanks.
Alright, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Two seconds.
One unified remote app.
You guys still have the rental program or the loaner program of the. Of the goat head removal tool.
Yes, we do.
Okay, that is, that is a shameless plug to the goat head.
Go to the horse.
Um so you can buy yourself, they're about, I think, two hundred dollars right now or more, but we have some to loan out, we try, okay, it's a new program. So we're working out some kinks, but um we usually lend it out for like a weekend, and we want to pick it up the following Monday or Tuesday. Um we're working out some problems where the goat head rollers don't work on spoil, so sand, if they don't work on your property, I'm so sorry. But yeah, if you just wanna send me an email, that's the best way to get in contact with me and uh time to drop it off.
Just so everyone knows and general public knows, it's. A great tool when it does work on uh on your property, and it's the equivalent of a goat head uh. Lawnmower, and it picks them up in droves.
I agree, they're really awesome when they work.
Yep.
But it doesn't work on sand, doesn't really work on sand or loosesters. Sometimes, you gotta have kind of a hard surface for it to push up into the bone.
Thank you.
Alright. Alright, thank you so much, Izzy, we appreciate your time and all that you do out there.
Alright, thank you.
Alright, we will move into commission disclosures, do we have anything? Anybody?
I'm here.
Nothing, alright. So maybe I'll just touch bases on one, there seems to be. Some concerns or talk going around that I might be financially involved in some. Housing projects that are going on around, one of them being the Nolton Group that's trying to do a. Project over on, I think, Boulder Avenue, and another one is.
Long time, right?
The Garn Group, yeah, we've been on that one a long time, but there's some rumors going around, and I just want to address them in the disclosure here, and then there's the Garn Group. And the Red Rock Partners that are putting in housing, they've started up at the top of Mill Creek, I think Harrison is doing the work on that project. But I have no financial ties to any project in this county, and uh the people that are concerned about that, reach out to me first, I'm always glad to. Discuss that or let everybody know, I am partners in a construction company here with my son, but um we are currently. Not working on any housing projects that I have been involved in as a commissioner, trying to help push forward, the goal is more housing. So thank you for that, and we will move on to commission reports, yes, sir.
I I just have one, um there's an item for a contract for the Indigent Defense Council. Uh my office's prosecution, the Indigent Defense Council does defense work, um that's an obvious uh conflict with prosecution. The county always has a different attorney review, the IDC doc, IDC contracts, public defender uh contracts, et cetera, so I just want to. Note that for the public is as well, but all you guys' public defender contracts don't get reviewed by by my office, so just wanted to disclose that.
Alright, thank you for that. We will move into commission reports, um Trish, do you want to start us off?
It was on vacation, so um did not attend any of my meetings, but didn't let them all know that I was going to be absent, so. Yay.
You did a job, you want to just carry us around?
Yeah, definitely, um August twelfth, Trail Mix meeting, uh we voted in our first uh act of transportation rep, Emily Wesner. Um we also uh talked about bylaws that we had had discussions here about. Uh we got rid of the attendance qualification. For the at-large members, clarified some of the rope positions, like turning the climbing rep into the roped activities rep to more accurately reflect uh those. Um groups they represent, the mountbiking rep against cycling rep, et cetera. Um and those should, uh those are with Stephen to review, and they should come to us at the next commission meeting. So expect to see that, uh we talked about Mud Springs, there are, Mud Springs is moving along, it's great, it's on time, it's gonna be, hopefully it'll be finished this fall, that'd be wonderful for everybody, uh. There are two volunteer dates for Mud Springs, so people can go out and and help out with the work, and those are September twenty-seventh and um October eighteenth. Um and also, we heard from our SAR rep, and they they said that they have been strained this year, this this more rescue, this rescues this year than previous years, and their perception is that. Uh there's a lot of people out in the back country that need rescuing. August twelfth, also attended the Colorado River Authority Dinner that uh Grant County hosted. Um I did just just attend the dinner, I, on that itinerary, uh it it said there'd be discussions, I was a little bit disappointed that there wasn't. Um any substantive uh discussion about the, about water at that, I was kind of expecting that. Um there was other events associated with that that I wasn't invited to, so um is what it is. Uh August thirteenth, TSSD, um we had a board member resign, so there's an open spot on that, also discussed.
Budgeted for.
On the Thompson uh water. There's an open spot there, we also uh discussed a budget amendment, they are needing to spend uh more money than previously discussed. On um basic or previously budgeted for on on some maintenance things, but luckily, loadout sales have been far exceeding what um the budget showed, so. There is a little bit of extra money to cover some expenses. Um also, uh there's ongoing discussion with Guissa about um uh, you know, taking over that TSSD. Uh a couple of the TSSD board members and the secretary had attended a Gwissa meeting, I think Brian could speak to that a little bit. Um I think it's a good step, I'm not sure when that's gonna happen, but hopefully it will. Um also, there is a, we we talked about what needed to be done before Guissa might take that over as well, because there's a lot of uh cleaning up and and other things that TSSD needs to do for that to happen. Um and I, in, as far as that goes, that board is very, or that that uh. That district is very undermanned as far as home goes, uh the water master out there is very part-time, he has a full-time job looking for a lot of water, and. There's some things they just, uh they haven't been able to get done, so we talked about ways that that might be able to, uh some of those things might be able to move forward. Um August fourteenth, uh I was on the selection committee meeting for choosing the branding agency with Brian. Um. We had three great candidates. Uh that was a pretty interesting process, uh we narrowed it down to two, and then eventually uh one of them is the one that will appear on our agenda today, that we're gonna vote on later. Um again, I think, I don't think we could have gone wrong with either of the top two, um. And I think the key to all this, and we discussed this in the meeting, is is very strong community engagement and just working on. Um on on. Representing kind of the whole, all all aspects of our community, uh and. Finding a branding message that we can all buy into, that we can kind of get behind to. Um highlight what we have here and um people in and uh. Keep people happy, so that I think that's gonna be a uh great endeavoring role, we'll see that coming up at the. On that agenda, yeah. Then yesterday, I attended the audit committee meeting, uh. Uh other committees attended that as well, as far as that presentation, so I'll go into that, uh but we did have a couple items after. That we went over the twenty twenty-four audit, uh one of them was discussing uh further direction for an internal auditor, so we talked about um. Uh them. Um doing a little bit of uh digging into oversight of of departments, we talked about elected offices and SSDs, et cetera, um. And we also discussed a budget for the internal auditor, and the budget we discussed is uh is significantly higher than we've had. Than we've paid for an internal auditor in the past, um again, that was uh that was, that was just a discussion, but I do. Um think that the internal auditor that we chose looks, looks. Optimistic about their capacity, so that's uh, that's all I got. Mike, sir. I was at the same meeting that uh you guys were, uh it was actually devil's booked on to my uh Transportation Special Service meeting. Uh have updates coming from that, and have my rec special service meeting uh tomorrow, so no real updates, other than meetings you guys all attended.
Thank you, Mary.
Yes, uh I attended the Colorado River Authority uh dinner, and I was very excited. And and I was, I was disappointed I didn't learn anything. I was really looking forward to a presentation and at least. Uh some information on what's happening and what's moving forward, but. It was, it was nice being around people. Um on the thirteenth, I had a homeless organizing committee meeting, and uh our uptick of homeless has increased a bit, but it's still low for this time of year, which. We haven't, we don't know what. We, you know, because, you know, we normally have more comas in the spring, summer and fall, and then it takes down a little bit in the winter, but right now. It's still higher than the winter, but it's not where. It has been in the past, uh the Yopri Clinic is doing a lot as far as helping our homeless community with. Haging, uh helping them get into areas where they can take a shower, and with clothing, which is really nice. Uh and uh the uh work that that Sea Haven is doing, and improve, you know, the fact that they're moving forward to having. More beds and such for our people who are working with domestic violence has been really helpful. And domestic violence still remains the top reason outside of addiction and. Uh drug abuse, I mean addiction, it's the same drug abuse, and uh mental illness, mental illness are the two. Main reasons people are in a homeless situation, and the third is domestic violence, and they also make up the. Largest group of people who are at risk of being helpless. Uh but I'm really excited the way that our homeless border connecting committee is working together so closely. Uh it's, there's been a big improvement over how that uh committee works. And exchanges information and helps coordinate so that the homeless that we do have get better, you know, better services. And you don't have the homeless come in that drain the system by going from one agency to another, because there's a real good communication to know that. They came here and got it. So when they show up to another place, you go, well, you you got your voucher. So that's good, that's nice to see, because that was a problem before. And that's uh all, that's all I have to report on, other than I attended the audit meeting, and it it was really. Quite informative and. Yeah, it, I I, I, you know, I can't say I enjoyed it, it was over. But uh it was also, I, I thought it was very thorough, and I really appreciated it.
Thank you, Brian.
Yeah, thanks. So let's see here, on the uh the sixth, I had a meeting with Planning and Zoning, and uh we discussed the timeline of how we will get the MFR forty-five. And introduce the landscape ordinance into the planning and zoning um commission. And then uh also on the sixth, I had a meeting with Jason Curry, and uh we kind of discussed some of the options that we're gonna have to work with the state. To accomplish some work and additional maintenance on some of our motorized trails that we have here, okay. Uh on the twelfth, um I had a meeting with the MTAB, and they gave us an update from Madden, which is our uh uh agency of record. Um the board commented that they feel that Madden is on the right track right now with connecting appropriate. Um, the board commented that they feel that Madden is on the right track right now with connecting appropriate ads to the targeted customers. Um, they gave us a little slide deck and uh, there was a slogan that I really liked. It was every traveler has an edge. Didn't know where you find yours. Uh, but they had a lot of, I can't remember, I think they did a hundred sixty ads. Right now, our previous agency, I think, had done six. So they are definitely putting in some work over there. Um, camp stories.
Sorry, Brian, are they out currently or should we be seeing?
They are out. They are out currently. You you should be seeing them on uh, you'll see it on uh, social media. And you should be seeing them on quite a few different platforms.
I haven't, I haven't listened yet, but it would be, it would be cool to get that presentation. I'd love to check something out.
Have to see what Matt's up to. Yeah, we can talk to him. Um, there's also the the deck is available on uh, M T A um, road agenda. So if you want to just go onto the previous agenda. You can go up and go see the deck and see what the actual ads are put now. Um, camp stories updated. That's our P R agency. Um, they got a story published in the recent Wall Street Journal um, for an article. Uh, and they're also uh, plotting an idea for a Christmas story, um, which should be pretty cool.
Oh, wow.
Yeah, yeah. Um, the uh, requested change, um, the M T A board requested some changes. Um, to the bylaws before they could approve them. There were some, there were some uh incongruencies. And so those should be sitting with admin right now. So we'll get those taken care of and then they can vote on those when they um, when they come back next month. Um, there was two subcommittees formed. One is going to be for the T R T, T R C C, the application. Which is gonna be an application process for all of our departments. They're gonna be requesting T R T, P R C C, so that the travel. Or the uh, M T A board can provide us with a recommended. Spend. Um, and then also for the special events uh grants. Um, so there is a marketing match that we have previously provided. Um, that system and that process is is kind of fallen to the wayside. So there's gonna be a new subcommittee or there is a subcommittee that were formed that's gonna be helping getting that process back up again and starting working with those special events. Um. Uh, we also did approve the uh, the selection of the the two agencies that we had and left it in the hands of the selection committee for the branding agency. Uh, there was a follow-up that happened um, two days later for that branding agency. So they wanted to just make sure they 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 boast or they voted. But they approved of those of the of the two uh, choices for the brand. See, on the twelfth, I briefly attended the Colorado River Advisory Council, which I'm part of. And uh, um, and we kind of just went around. There was a lot of uh, legislature and delegates that were here. Um, to kind of discuss some of the problems that were going on with the, or not the problems, but process of what's going on with the Colorado River interim guidelines. Um, and so we had that dinner. That's a joint dinner at the Sunset Grill. I thought it was very successful. Um, Gene Shawcraft gave, I thought, a nice presentation and it was a great um, great opportunity to to mingle with. Um, I think Senator Lee had some delegation there. Um, and then we had uh, Shu and uh, Casey Snyder came and joined us. From the state as well. Um, yeah, a lot of great people, um, sitting there talking about Colorado River. Um, I don't know how how what happened at your guys' table, but we had a whole bunch of great discussions sitting over on at our.
Talked about Trump's takeover at D C.
Yeah, we just sent her to the ladies office.
Um, yeah, and so then on the thirteenth, there was a river trip that was hosted by Oars. Um, Oars did a fantastic job out there. Um, uh, taking us out there on the Colorado River. Um, we had three breakout sessions along the banks of the Colorado. Um, the first one was uh, we built a model of the Colorado River system. And then we talked about uh, legal infrastructure, energy, agricultural, uh, recreational fish and wildlife concerns along. The uh, the Colorado. Um, the second uh, stop, Gene uh, Shawcraft. He gave, and he's the Colorado River Commissioner of Utah. He gave an update on the current state of the negotiations and the timeline of the upper and the upper and the lower basin. Are running into to have an alternative set for the interim guidelines. So that's gonna need to probably be set sometime by mid-November. So that's that's what we're looking at. Um, as far as that goes, I did hear that they did have um, some negotiations happening. Two days prior up there in Salt Lake City. So they are happening right now as we're, as we're speaking. I think they're meeting. Weekly, if not, if not, uh, uh. Um, on the third stop, Amy Haas, who's the executive director of the Colorado River Authority of Utah. She spoke and um, talked about a lot of the initiatives that Utah is taking for its voluntary uh, um, conservation. It's a pretty neat little program that they got going on. Um, on the fourteenth, we uh, had a branding, um, we talked about the branding, um, for the Moab Office of Tourism. And um, yeah, there was, there was a lot of great conversations held and we ended up coming up with two picks, I think. Um, it was one pick that I think that that was a little bit better than the others. We had some follow-up questions. So I think that we're gonna get the answers to those questions tonight and it should be on on our agenda. On the sixteenth, we have the audit committee and as the audit committee came through, um, Karen, who's our financial.
Advisor.
Advisor. Yep. She gave us, she gave us some great recommendations on the audit. I believe those should have been implemented. And then um, in her assessment, she's uh, felt that Larson had fulfilled their obligations as an auditor. So. Um, and then also in that, uh, for future considerations, I'd like to consider putting G P P. On the next agenda and talk about as a discussion item and talk about um, contracting them for. For the program that he was talking about at the end of our audit committee.
What's G G P?
G P P.
That's our internal law.
Internal law.
Oh.
Internal law.
That's it. All right, before we go to Mel, I am gonna break for the six o'clock citizen to be heard. So which were six minutes late for our apologies. That there's any citizens that would like to speak, if citizens can be heard, now would be the time to do so. Anybody online, Quinn? Oh, um, Charlotte normally would do once a day.
Um, okay. Wait, I just had the League of Women, a League of Voters in Grand County. It's all I wanted to say.
Okay, thank you.
Directing.
All right, anybody else? Lynn, Mr. Jackson, please introduce yourselves. Mike working here? I believe so.
They're over. Okay, I, uh, we had a hard time hearing that lady earlier. So Lynn Jackson, just a couple of comments. I heard some great news about trails that are being built, Mud Springs and some others. My question is, when are we going to build a trail for the local citizens that goes out Spanish Valley?
What do you mean? It's in process.
Good.
It's in process.
Okay, it's been, we were talking about that when I was on a commission clear back.
Sorry, I know I'm not supposed to be talking. We did say we're gonna start getting monthly updates built. And so we maybe should, I don't know, push that out somehow. Anyways.
That'd be nice, yeah. If there was some information.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Okay, so just one other quick thing and it relates to the ballot initiative and I think uh. I I commend you guys for putting that to the voters. That's a good thing, uh, what the city did with their property tax. Um, but I see uh, some optic issues if the way it's worded. The state statute allows that tax, if it's passed, and I know most of you know this, to be used for like six different entities. Yes, and but the ballot just identifies three, uh. You know what they are. So what what I see is a problem, if if it passes, there's gonna be a time, a year, two down the road, three years, who knows? When you guys as a commissioner are gonna exercise your authority under the statute to uh allocate that money to all six entities. You're gonna pull some away from one of the three that the citizens voted for and it's gonna raise questions. Uh, none of these entities, from my experience, like losing money. Some of them are likely to come in and wave that ballot in front of your face and say, hold on. You never talked about giving money to solid waste or avalanche control. So. My suggestion is probably a legal thing for you guys, particularly Stephen is. Uh, I think your ballot should list all six things. Rather just say, well, you know, the statute says we can do all, anything we want. The voters think it's only going three places. So I just think you'll avoid some optical problems down the road. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else? Still nobody online. All right, we will continue on with our commission reports. Mel?
Okay, Thursday, the seventh, I went to the Moab Area Housing Task Force meeting, just as an interested person. Um, but. I was, there there wasn't anyone there from the counties. They ended up asking me a lot of questions, but. Anyways, it was update on what's happening with all the entities that are involved with that. And we also discussed that fifteen thousand dollar asset. We're discussing fairly on the agenda. So that was good information for me. Then on Monday, the eleventh, the Council on Aging, and we've had. Our biggest discussion there is just the need for assisted living facilities in Grand County. Uh, Tuesday, I did go up to Sunset Grill for that dinner with the Colorado River Authority. It was great. I did sit with Amy Haas, who's the director of that. And also some delegation from Lee's Office of Natural Resources. So it was good to visit with people and I, I did learn some things. Um, Wednesday. The twelve bit agenda review and then right after that, I like to to go to the Moab Chamber of Commerce Board meeting. As I was filling in for Brian since he was on the river with the Colorado River Authority. Um, winter festivities. Or is hard at work. Um, the winter shoulder season marketing has gone out. I didn't notice I was out, so I don't know what Brian talked about with the M T A board and the chamber kind of combining. To do P R to coincide with the December holiday festivities. Um, so it'll be a collaborative effort. And hopefully some some funding from um, our T R T to to push that. They have a business survey out on Facebook. Um, so they can find out what local businesses want or are interested in participating during that time. Um, the other events they have going on is the monthly meetup at the HU D U is August the first. And then the Chamber banquet is November eighth at the HU D U as well. It's always a big event. Um, and then the business summit is scheduled for January fifteenth at Spring Hill Suites. Canyonland's Healthcare Special Service District was last Thursday evening. And they are moving forward with a master plan for the eight acres behind the Grand Center and adjacent to the carousel. So we know what they're gonna do with that piece, but they're moving along um, to make a plan, which is good. They didn't get the C I B grant, that C I B grant because um. I don't know why, but they didn't get it, but it's not gonna slow things down. They're gonna continue to do it. Um. And then I did go to the audit committee yesterday, so it was very enlightening. A lot of information. I don't know if we'll discuss it more later in the agenda. This morning I had the EMS Special Service District meeting and there was a great financial review from the director and I emailed that to all of you commissioners. So, and my first future consideration would be that we should put on a action items for liaison to the Moab Area Community Land Trust.
That.
That's it.
Good, thank you. All right, I started off with a meeting um, with the I D C and they are looking at hiring a regional manager that would be over, I think. Four counties or five. The possibility of some savings actually there for the county in the future. We um, currently have, I believe, are paying. Half and they um, fund the rest, the other half of the director currently with um, a grant. Also part of the airport board meeting, some bylaw changes, some discussions around the B O R and a possible. Having to move that in the future. Let's see, I was also part of a centrally assessed conversation with. Um, U A C, the Utah Association of Counties in Salt Lake, and there were a couple of senators. Senator Owen, Senator Coleman, and Representative Bolander that attended that and they are. Pushing a little bit harder this year to try and get some of our centrally assessed issues. Possibly under control or at least get us some help with it. The um, we continually get requested from some of the larger. Companies through the county to reduce their tax rate, which forces us then to have to repay that money. We're currently working, I think, on twenty seventeen with the Mid-America Pipeline requesting money back. So we're so far behind that. We're repaying for. Previous, during previous commissioners' time on the commission. So we aren't even up to what's going on currently.
Uh, thanks.
Let's see, I was also at the audit committee in the financial statements that we were going over there. There was a lot of information. Um. I, I think the biggest. Thing was the fact that Karen did um, appreciate the job that Larson's had done and um, felt like they were doing an adequate job there. I I also see or had some conversation around our component units and. The possibility of moving their deadline dates forward so that our. Reporting is not late as it has been for past years and currently we are. I also was at the Colorado River Dinner and then the next day on the raft trip, um, the dinner was quite interesting. Uh, I was sitting by Gene Shawcroft, so I did get some information there. Um, I would say the highlight of the dinner evening for me though was. Commissioner McCurdy took us on a boat ride in the dark out on the Colorado River. And so that was. I actually had a lot of fun on that. That was the highlight of my evening there. And then there was a lot of good information on the trip down the river and we had multiple breakout sessions and Brian spoke about. Building a model of the river and I um, have to say he knows the Colorado River better than anybody that I am aware of. And I learned a lot about the river. There were so many tributaries that come into that system that I had. I'd never even heard of the rivers that dump into the Colorado, but I learned a lot from that one and I thought it was quite interesting. Um, let's see, what else? I was in a meeting with um, Enbridge. Who was the company that bought out Dominion Gas her locally and that was just regarding. Updating our franchise agreement as they um, run pipelines throughout the county and they have agreements to um, be able to. Those up and repair them. Whatnot. And I think that is the end of my report. And so we can move on to elected cert.
Um, just real brief, um, the county attorney's office, we're putting on more exciting trainings. So everybody get ready for our next. One is going to be retention requests and rights. Uh, an exciting training on Grandma, the Government Records Access Management Act. So I know you guys all have depends uh, planners out, but it will be in September. We'll save the date for you guys. It'll be really exciting. Uh, we'll have everybody uh, aware of that date so we can get that training. Um, additionally, just letting folks know, this weekend, August twenty-third, uh, the Friends of the C J C is putting on a Scoop Splash in support. Um, it's an event where they'll be serving banana splits and uh, doing uh, free passes to the Marriott's Resort Style Pool. Um, as a fundraiser and that's this weekend, August twenty-third. Uh, for more information, you can check out the Friends of the C J C. Um, they have that information, players available. Apart from that, that's all the updates that I have. I've got legal review on topics tonight, but I'll just get to that when we do. Thanks.
Thank you, sir.
Dave.
Thank you, Chair. Glad I made it back in time to give a report. Um, so a couple of things my office is working on, um. One thing, I'm working with Zions Bank right now, um, and taking sort of regular steps in incorporating some new anti-fraud measures. Uh, there's one. Particular called Positive Pay. Um, and we're, we'll upload, upload a file of our, of all of our checks that we write for every check run and make sure that those are um. Sort of cross-referenced with information that the bank has, just to make sure that there aren't any fraudulent checks. Um, it's pretty standard practice now and so it's good, it's good for us to um, get up to speed with that. Thankfully. We haven't run into any issues, um, but this can be a nice uh, measure that we can put in place. And along with that, exploring some possibilities for efficiencies in terms of um, outsourcing the printing of checks potentially for. Some of, some more of the regular checks that we do here. Um, and so just seeing what. My, what cost might might be associated with that, just exploring those options as they come up. Um. I've got a couple of large complex grammar requests in my queue. I'm trying to work through and maintain some progress on amidst um. Everything else that I'm kind of working on on a regular basis. Uh, the budget process is underway in the sense of communication with all department heads. Um, and and um, preparing an initial draft budget. So that we can get those in by the first of, or by the first week of September. Um, and have those start um, ready for feedback and for a present, presentation before the budget advisory board and just getting, getting that all rolling. Uh, there's a lot of back and forth. There already is, um. You know, I filled in and at least a half a dozen emails today with some. Specific questions about, you know, some of the finer points of filling out the budget and I expect that to continue. I'm really happy to be a resource for all the department heads as, as we go through this process together. Um. Um, a kind of heating, one other thing kind of heating up is the oversight of the Board of Equalization Appeal. Of processing of all the applications that we received. And so I had mentioned before that we have an online application submission process now. Um, which I think has been a really welcome thing for a lot of property owners. To be able to submit their applications online. It had been all really old fashioned, but um, uh, really hard copy paper. To be able to submit their applications online. Um, it had been all really old fashioned by um, uh, really hard copy paper. Strictly um until now, so really glad to to sort of open up that improvement and it's been going uh going on. Been going off without a hitch. Um. And with that, uh, uh, scheduling appeals, uh, the Hearing Officer will be here next week, Wednesday, Thursday, and Friday to see the first round of um. In-person deals. I know we had spoken in previous years about. The, the. The possibility of members of the Board of Equalization yourselves, so um appearing at the hearings and you know, we do delegate a hearing officer, so. It would be, it would be something that I think in times that we've talked about in the past, it would have to be strictly as a, as an observer. Um. But I don't see why, if you were interested in that, um, you know, how that process goes, I think that there's been increased interest in that process. Um, and it'll be held here in the chambers uh starting next Wednesday where most of the residential appeals will be heard. Um, so I don't know if if there's a desire for me to send some information out about what that is, just as a reminder and uh. But I can, I can do that. Um. And yeah, along with that is, um, you know, sort of as the. It's, it is a somewhat independent third party on uh to the process in the sense of setting up the. The hearings and and receiving the applications, but not being involved in the determinations and the initial valuations and things of that nature. Um, you know, at my office, uh, and. My role in particular often serves as a sounding board, um, you know, for property owners, um, in regards to the process and regards of. You know, what their valuations are. So, uh, but I I do, um, uh, take pride in uh giving uh constituents. Someone that will listen to them and listen to their concerns and, but you know, but also, you know, be clear about. You know, responsibilities that the county has to uphold, you know, uphold its own, you know, the the own regulations and and laws associated with valuation. So. It's an, it's an, but it's an interesting process, but I do find myself these days um sitting in my office with constituents for. Extended periods of time and that's, but I I do enjoy doing that. Um. So Stephen, Stephen Vowles, the um Finance Director, he had his last day on Friday. He had to go up and be with family up on the West Edge Front. Um, and I am very happy to uh um. Announce that I was able to uh turn around really quick, given the, given the timing and the situation that we're in with um the budget season upon us. Um, I thought it would be at least worth a try to post the position and see if there was a, a. A qualified, capable applicant uh to to fill in and get in, get into that position as soon as possible. And so I was able to to find someone, their name is Chantel Jensen. They've worked with the Moab City previously. Um, they served as the Appointed Treasurer from Moab City. Lots of really applicable, great experience as it relates to uh how government finance works. Um, I think it'll be really valuable. I think it'll. Think we'll get a different perspective than um than Stephen was able to provide and and I think. I think we'll learn a lot from having Stephen with us um for a year and. Be able to pivot and adjust as necessary. It was a relatively good position. When we hired him and I think that we have an opportunity now to. To, to set the tone and especially in terms of how that position. Um, serves and provides regular, uh, provides a regular source of information for the commission. So I really look forward to. Any improvements possible that can be made on that, um, on that, in that front. Um. And so, yeah, I look forward to continuing discussions on that. Um, yeah, there's lots of other things, you know, little small bits. I just have a long list of things that end up on my desk every day. Um. I am part of a Legislative Steering Committee for the County Clerks in the state, uh, representing rural counties. Um. And as part of that, um, so for the rest of this week, I'm attending a conference in Salt Lake City for, it's the National, uh. National Election Officials Conference, SARAH, and it's part of a certification that I'm completing this year. That's uh. Made up of 12 courses. Um, and there's an opportunity to to sit in on a hearing tomorrow morning at the Capitol. As part, as part of my role in the Legislative Steering Committee for the County Clerks. Um, but otherwise, I will also be conferring with um election officials from across the country and it's uh, I'm really looking forward to. The honor of being able to do that. Um. Uh, and then one last thing, we're 77 days from the general election on November 4th. And um also have a new staff person who's serving as the Elections Coordinator in the Clerk's Office, and that's Emily Valentine. And I'm just really excited um as well. I think we're really lucky to to get Emily and plug her into that role. She's uh gonna be a tremendous asset. Um, to the county for many years to come. So, yeah.
Thank you, sir. When you have anything?
All right, so we will move onward then. With our consent agenda items. I have, uh, let's see, we do not have the minutes in this one. We will skip the minutes. I've got ratification of. Payment of bills, total bills, eight hundred and thirty-five thousand and forty-seven dollars and fifty-eight cents. Total payroll, six hundred and one thousand, two hundred and ten dollars and seventy-one cents. With a total bills and payroll of one million, four hundred and thirty-six thousand, two hundred and fifty-eight dollars and twenty-nine cents. Local consent for liquor license, Red Cliffs Lodge. Fiscal year 26, property agreement between the DNR Forestry Fire and State Lands, FFSL. And Grand County. Noxious Weeds Department. Consideration of signing a letter of support for the cybersecurity funding. And the grant contract for a hundred and ninety-two thousand, two hundred and eighty-three dollars for non-motorized trail projects. And the Indigent Defense Council Grant Contract Approval.
Bill, is it, is it possible that we pull the uh F off for discussion later?
Uh, sure. All right, so we will look for a motion to approve the consent agenda minus item F. So move. Motion by Commissioner Hadler, second by Commissioner McCurdy, all in favor? I will look at the grant contract with non-motorized Commissioner Martinez.
Yeah, you want a second? Just go ahead and hold it up. I just have some questions and I don't know if anybody can answer that. So I just wanted to clarify, so when I look at fiscal impact on the agenda summary, it says 192 coming in in revenue right there. But I remembered that there was a match. So if we actually look at the 2025 RTP contract right there, there is a match. On that of. Um. Seventy-eight thousand, nine hundred and twenty, uh, nine hundred and twenty-eight dollars and twenty-nine cents. So I'm just wondering if that agenda is correct right there.
Is it in kind?
No, that's a cash match right there. And then the in-kind matches nine thousand, three hundred and sixty-eight dollars and eighty cents.
Do you know, question?
Um, no.
And also if it is a match, where uh, where it comes from, it's that optional tax.
Yeah.
Uh, which I think it has been in the past, but.
Yeah, yeah. Stephen, I do have a question for you on the optional tax. Um, and it might need to look into this, but are trails an allowable use for the, for the optional tax? I thought that they had to be something for transportation.
Are you, are you talking in the mid, the revised mitigation for TRC?
No, not TRT. I'm talking about, I think it's option, is it the option B tax? It's the other restricted fund, but it's one of the, uh, other restricted funds.
I, I have to look into it.
Yeah, if you could look into that and just let me know how that, how that works. I know that that trails are, but they have, I think it has to be for a means of conveyance. Anyways, yeah, I just wanted to bring that up right there, that that there is, there is a matching, uh, uh, a match on that of seventy-eight thousand, nine hundred and twenty-eight dollars.
So we would need to move this considering that has a fiscal impact on the county. Do we need to have a, an actual vote and determine where that funds are coming from?
You guys pulled it from the, you, you guys will have to fight, you guys will have to um make a motion anyways on what you guys want to do because you pulled it from the consent agenda.
Okay.
Can we, can we uh maybe find the answer and move us?
At the next meeting.
No, or even, it, I'm always worried about these grants having to get, you know, a lot of.
So I want to know when deadline is for that.
Number 30 is 2020.
Project.
It's good to just pass it for a moment, then we can come back to it.
Yeah, we can get the answers before the end of the meeting.
Sure, we'll just bring it up later in the agenda then.
Excellent.
Is that all right? Good, everybody, okay. All right, we will move on then to. Item number four. Proclamation Suicide Prevention Month, and I know that um you ladies have patiently waited. Adam, I appreciate and thank you for doing so.
Good evening, Commissioners. Thank you so much for your time. I will start at that end of the table and let these ladies introduce themselves.
I am Elizabeth Wright. I work at Four Corners Community Behavioral Health. And I facilitate the Great Coalition, which is our local prevention coalition and resident for almost 20 years.
I'm Laurel Lee Green and I'm a Red County School District, um, school board member.
I am Taylor Passerella and I am the Prevention Director at Four Corners, um, Community Behavioral Health. So I cover Carbon, Emery, and Grand County's prevention efforts, so.
And I'm Amanda McIntosh. I'm the Suicide Prevention Liaison with Four Corners Community Behavioral Health. Formerly the uh Suicide Prevention Specialist with the uh Southeast Utah Health Department, so I recognize a couple of you. Um, thank you again so much for the opportunity to just talk a little bit about why we're here. Um, this is the first time that I have uh come to Grand County Commissioners to request for a proclamation. To be read into the minutes for naming September Suicide Prevention and Awareness Month. And it's the first time for a couple of different reasons. I've been in this work and in this field for the last seven or eight years. And I have to uh test the waters when I come into different spaces for suicide prevention. And uh, the last couple of years, uh, it's, it's kind of been hot and cold as far as it being accepted and willing to be talked about and things like that. Um, on many different levels. And so a-again, my appreciation goes to it, uh, to you uh for allowing me to come and speak on it. Um, it's really up to you if you'd like me to read the proclamation or if you would like to read the proclamation. But by doing so and and uh having an out loud conversation about it, we are breaking down the stigma. Um, and the uh, the burden that people carry when it comes to talking about mental health in general. But suicide prevention specifically. And when we talk about suicide prevention and we bring to light the numbers of people that we are, are losing to suicide. Not just in our small community of Grand County, but as, as a, as a three-county um area. The statistics are alarming and they are, um. It, it's a public health issue that we want to keep at the forefront of our prevention efforts across the board at the school level, at the prevention level, at the. Local Mental Health Authority level. And um. With that, I'll again, turn it to you. If you would like to read the proclamation, that's fine, or I can read it. It's up to you.
Um, sure, Brian, I would be glad to also, but please do it. Either way, I think it's great that we get to do that here and appreciate you letting us do it.
Yes, thank you.
Um, suicide prevention and where, awareness. Whereas the state of Utah has consistently been at the top 10 for states for suicide deaths since 202012. Currently seventh in the nation versus 2024 reporting ninth. And whereas Carbon, Emery, and Grand County often lead the state of Utah in suicide deaths per capita. And whereas people who lose a loved one to suicide are at a 30% higher risk of ending their lives to suicide. As a learned coping mechanism and learned behaviors. And whereas the risk of suicide can be reduced through awareness, training, proper educational resources and treatment. And whereas, according to the American Foundation for Suicide Prevention Statistics. Suicide is the second leading cause of death amongst Utahns aged fifteen to twenty-four. Second leading cause of death among ages twenty-five to thirty-four. Second for ages thirty-five to forty-four, fourth for ages forty-five to fifty-four. Fourth for ages fifty-five to sixty-four, ninth in 2024, and eighteenth for ages sixty-five and older. And whereas suicide affects everyone, suicide is everyone's business and suicide is one of the most preventable deaths. That can be avoided by one, learning the warning signs of depression and suicide ide- ideation. Two, knowing how and when to ask about one's suicidal thoughts. Three, being aware of life-saving measures. And four, familiarizing ourselves with the resources available locally such as Four Corners, Community Behavioral Health. Statewide such as Live on Utah and nationwide such as calling or texting nine eight eight. The Suicide and Crisis Lifeline. Now, therefore, we, Grand County Commissioners, Winfield, Martinez, McCurdy, McCandless, McGann. Adler and Hadeen, on this 19th of August, 2025. Do hereby proclaim September, 2025 to be Suicide Prevention and Awareness Month. In the county of Grand and encourage all residents of Grand County to recognize how serious suicide is. And the stitch, the steps each of us can take to protect those around us from the preventable tragedy. One with devastating generational and community-wide effects.
Thank you.
Thank you.
So there are a couple of things that I would like to bring to your attention. Uh, uh, as far as what we are doing in the community presently for suicide prevention. Um, working with the Great Coalition and the Prevention and Wellness Coalition that have teamed up together with the school district. We are getting more mental health, um, uh, messaging into our school, into our students' hands. Um, we are also in the process of um creating a, the, for the first time, a suicide prevention walk. Happening at Grand High School on October 4th. Um, onsite registration begins at 5:30. And the program begins at 6:00. Representative Logan Monson has already agreed to come and speak at it amongst other. Great uh speakers that will be there to to talk to us. Um, another thing that we are doing is on World Suicide Prevention Day, which is Wednesday, September 10th. They are, uh, these ladies are hosting a candlelight vigil at Swan, Swanee Park.
Swanee.
Swanee, excuse me, Swanee Park, uh, beginning at 7:00. This National Day of Recognition is a reverent um support system for those in our community who have lost somebody to suicide. And need to be surrounded by others who know that healing journey and the struggles that come with the difference in grieving. Um, a lot, loved one lost to suicide versus a uh. A different kind of, of, of debt. Um, and so that is a free event. Um, Four Corners will be, be providing the uh battery lit candles. So there's no fire, uh, uh, concern there. Uh, but they will meet for an hour and. Worldwide at 8 o'clock PM in respective time zones, time zones, uh, that. Candles are lit in remembrance of the loved ones that we've lost. In recent years, uh, looking at our data for Carbon, Emery, and Grand Counties, we are seeing an influx in suicide deaths. In uh, in Grand County and especially amongst uh our older seniors across the three counties. So we really are trying to put forth a diligent effort in bringing more resources, more training. And more opportunities for us as community members to prepare ourselves and be ready in, in the event of a suicidal crisis. Also, on September 9th, we are hosting a uh community for a free to the community. Uh, QPR training, which stands for Question, Persuade, Refer. It's a two-hour suicide prevention training. Um, where you are certified and will learn the common warning signs of what's wrong in somebody. That is uh currently struggling with this suicidal crisis, how to quite, uh, excuse me, how to safely question their suicidal intent. Persuade them to live and to get help and then who and when to refer them to, for resources. Um, that will be taking place at the Mark, um, starting at 6:00 PM. Again, we encourage you to apply or. We encourage you to attend, um, to, to see the efforts that, that we are, are, are making. I open it up to you for question. Oh, yes.
I applaud uh everything you guys do in erasing the stigma of it, uh. Taking place in many of our lives. So uh, thank you for the work that you do. Two, I'd like to make the motion. I move to approve the proclamation hereby proclaiming September, 2025 to be the Suicide Prevention and Awareness Month.
My second.
Motion by Commissioner McCurdy, second by Commissioner McCandless. Do we have any further thoughts, discussions?
This is an easy one.
Thank you. Um, please, yes.
Believe, I'll say a few things.
Okay.
You talked about the warning signs. Just in my own life. It's been a number of years ago, there was a young lady that was waiting on me and on her face was hell. And that's a warning sign that I missed. And she ended up taking her own life. And so those things. If we realize sometimes just how tough life is for some other people and we're just going about our daily lives. Whether it be at a restaurant or wherever, it's very important. So the warning signs are, um, sometimes at least they get missed for sure. Oh, I, I too also thank you guys for everything that you're doing.
Thank you. Thank you. Thank you so much. I appreciate you all again. Thank you so much. Um, and, and hope that you will create maybe a, a Grand County team and join us on October fourth. Come to the training on September ninth, come to the candlelight vigil on the tenth, just to show your support to a community that is in desperate need of, of, uh, comfort and support and encouragement.
I can email the flyers.
For the flyer.
If you would just to.
No, we still have to vote. All right. Anybody else?
Sorry.
I don't think it'd be very far given.
Favor. Passes unanimously. Again, thanks for, um, being patient with us, for sure.
Thank you.
Thanks for hearing us out.
Yes, thank you.
All right. Let's see, the next item was one we discussed that was postponed or moved. So we will move on to number six, the approval of the final plat of the Venus subdivision.
Hello. So this is for, um, parcel number zero-two-one-seven-one-two-zero. It's a nineteen eighty-eight plot drive. In Moab, it's approved final plat approval of a nine-lot subdivision. Um, it's mixed zoning. Have a commercial on one side and there's some residential I'll get back. Um. This was, they received preliminary plat approval on May second. Um, there were some conditions with that. Those have been addressed. All of land use requirements have been met. The staff is recommending that you guys approve this. Um, if you guys have any questions, this is the applicant.
Troy Naylor.
Anybody? Questions? Mike?
Uh, following the recommended motion, I'd like to make the motion, I move to approve the final plat for the La Vena subdivision. Parcel number zero-two-dash-zero-zero-one-seven-dash-zero-one-two-zero, submitted by Foothold Incorporated with the findings of fact and conditions of approval as recommended by staff.
All right, motion by Commissioner McCurdy, second by Commissioner McGann. Any further discussion? All right. Between that, I'll call for a vote. All in favor? Motion passes with Commissioner Martinez absent, six-zero.
Thanks.
Thank you, guys.
Um, real quick, uh, we got final plat of Thompson tonight, so that.
There you go. Wow.
All right, so with that, we will move on to number seven to appoint an additional commission liaison to the planning commission and I'm the one presenting this and bringing it forward. I don't know if we have a recommended. Motion with this. All right, please do.
I move to approve Brian Martinez as an additional liaison to the planning commission.
All right, motion by Commissioner McCandless, second by Commissioner McCurdy. Further discussion? Yes, Trish.
I just said a couple of things. Again, if we go into our governing policies, procedures for Grand County, um, these positions are appointed in January. And so the fact that we're going against those policies and procedures is a problem, I think. Um, but on the go, we keep doing it. And, um, I have had no complaints. I've actually had a number of compliments as to my professionalism. Curtis Wells just told me last week, he said, you're the best planning commission liaison I've seen since I've been interacting with commissions. I think I try to relay information back and forth in a very effective manner. I take extensive notes. I try to interact when asked by either the planning director and/or the count, the planning commission. I try to respond when they have questions for me. So I'm taken aback as to why this is an item.
Yes, John.
Yeah, I don't support this at all. I think, um, I don't think we need another planning, uh, commission liaison. We've never, this is kind of unprecedented. We have needed one in the past. Any commissioner can sit in and one of those, one of those meetings and frequently do. Um, I, I think Trish has done a great job of being a liaison in all five years that she's been on the commission and I just think this is, I think it's unnecessary. I, I think that, uh, you tried to remove her from the position a while ago and that didn't work. So now you're throwing another, uh, liaison out there.
I don't recall ever trying to remove her. Even at the beginning of the year, you know, she knew, she was like, I'm gonna probably lose this position. She left, she stayed on there. Um, I had, I was just gonna start going to all the meetings, but you know, when I spoke to Stephen, but when Stephen was spoken to, he let us know that it, it does matter because we can't speak. If you show up to a board, um, as just, as a commissioner and not the liaison, then you're a citizen there. And so that's where you can speak as citizens to be heard and that's all. You don't have any, um, you're not able to, uh, speak on behalf of the commission at all. And I do think that we need to have, you know, and, and Trish has done a good job. She has a lot of extensive knowledge, but you know, last meeting, she stated that the us commissioners don't know what goes on there. So I feel like we don't know what's going on there, that maybe we need to be, you know, pointed on there. So I was willing to do it. I know Brian was willing to do it. I think we're gonna swap. Um, and take over the chamber maybe, but anyways, yeah, I might take over the chamber as a liaison position and, you know, then, then we can learn more. But I, I do watch every meeting trying to learn what goes on in there and, and Trish has extensive background in it. I think that she's beneficial to staying there, but there could just be another voice.
Yes, please, Brian.
Yeah, and, and I'm sorry, I missed a little bit of what was happening there. But I, I will, I will say that I did go to a planning commission meeting and I was told that I was not allowed to speak.
No, I.
That was by you, Trish. I'm, I'm gonna call you out on that because you actually said, we'll have time to talk about this at the commission meeting. But right now, you do not have time. You, you are not allowed to speak. Talk to Stephen. Um, and that, and that's true. I wasn't allowed to speak. I, I said, that's just fine. But I mean, let's just make sure that we understand, we're all speaking the same language. You told me I couldn't speak at the planning commission, so don't tell me that any commissioner can go there and have a chance to speak. That's all I have. Thanks.
Or anybody else?
All right. Motion by Commissioner McCandless, second by Commissioner McCurdy. All in favor? Those opposed. Motion passes with Commissioner Hadeen, Commissioner Hadler, and Commissioner McGann opposed. We will move on to question and award contract for the branding agency. It's like we have folks here. Thank you, Mick and Ally.
Did he leave with you? Well, handed to a lot of that. Where did that come from? Where you got my stickers?
No, that's something else. Um, they, I think they are doing that. Okay. Thank you. Sorry. Hi, Mick from the Mo, Office of Tourism.
It's Ally from the Mo Bus Tourism.
Uh, this item is to select an agency for the branding RFP that we issued on June one. Um, you'll indulge me. I'll read the project goal and give a little background of how we got here. Um, from the RFP, project goal is to develop a comprehensive strategy, brand platform, and story for Moab that not only constitutes it as a must-visit destination, but also incorporates lessons learned from other international destinations and our past promotional efforts. Uh, one goal for this project is to create a brand and implement, uh, and implement it uh, in a way that touches every stage of the life cycle. And to get buy-in through our community, uh, is critical to the project's success. Um, I was looking back on what we've done this year to get ready for this project. Um, and we started by, um, after budgeting for it, we started by, um, looking at RFPs that were issued by other destinations. Shared that with the MTAB board. Um, we looked at RFPs issued by the state and destinations in Colorado and Arizona. Um, we also met with DMO teams, um, at Park City, at Visit Milwaukee, uh, recently undergone branding projects. Um, and, uh, from the item itself, um, I'll just read the background here. Um, uh, after establishing an RFP with the board, uh, we formed a selection committee made up of Commissioners Martinez and Hadler, um, the Chair and Vice Chair of MTAB, uh, members of MOT, which is me and Ally. Uh, Commission Administration, Quinn sat on the selection committee. Um, the county clerk helped us review.
Proposals.
Game and the Marketing Director at the Utah Tourism. Collectively reviewed thirty-six proposals, nearly a thousand pages with bids ranging from eighty-eight thousand to two-point-two million and answered hundreds of questions submitted in the permanent portal. Um, we had a large response and we got a really good, um, sense of what people were offering from. Um, from that initial pool, the selection committee selected three agencies. Um, they were named finalists and the lead strategist, creative director, and account executive at each agency traveled to Moab for in-person presentations and interviews with many, and allies, uh, agency partners, which is Camp Stories. Um, from that committee, um, made a selection. We, uh, recommend selection of Camp for Tourists to serve as the strategy of brand, branding agency for this limited engagement. Um, the three finalists were reviewed by the Moab Tourism Advisory Board at its August twelfth meeting. And the board voted unanimously to give the selection committee the authority to choose a branding agency out of three finalists. Um, from that, the selection committee met, uh, and we selected Camp for Tourist. Um, we had a clar- clarification meeting with Camp for Tourist as outlined in the RFP. Um, and they confirmed that everything listed under the three phases in the RFP will be included in scope of work deliverables list. Um, and it was a great meeting with great energy. Everyone's genuinely excited to get started. And with your approval, we will start to get a contract together.
So with that, we have some questions.
Uh, statement, and then I'd like to make a motion. Uh, not often in Rhode Utah, we see thirty-six applicants to an R, uh, RFP. I really like seeing that. Uh, it means there was some draw and it wasn't the cheapest nor the most, so I, uh, it was, it looks like it was very well gone over, uh, from here, both from Josh and Brian. Uh, and with that, I'd like to make the motion. I might move to award the strategy of branding agency contract to Camp for and Tourist in an amount not to exceed seven-hundred-fifty thousand dollars and authorize the chair to sign all associated documents and contracts upon completion of legal review.
Motion by Commissioner McCurdy, second by Commissioner Martinez. Further discussion?
As Brian stated earlier, when, during his reports, there were, there were some further, uh, questions that the, uh, advertising agency had asked.
Yeah, uh, we went back to them with those questions. Um, they responded, um, and were satisfied with their answers. Um, it was a great meeting. Like I said, everybody's excited to get started. Um, and, um, uh, bulk of the response is just confirming that everything listed in the RFP will be included in the scope of work contract. And so as we develop that over the, we've, but, kind of for about a month to do that, and we'll start kind of turning proposal into it.
And if I recall, I think, uh, a, a lot of that question involved, um, community outreach and, and their efforts to, to come to Moab and really, um, get a good idea about what, what the community as a whole cares about. And so you were satisfied with their, their response to that and their, their commitment to, to really doing their homework on that front.
Yeah, I am. Um, I think the materials that were submitted with this item are good to review. They have a lot of the ideas that they were proposing for the project, um, including, um, I've earmarked a bunch of pieces here, but um, without going into too much detail, yes, I think that they're, from their initial proposal all the way through to these final questions, um, this is something that they understood as part of the RFP and that they think it's, um, really important to getting right.
Yeah, Brian. Yeah, I just want to commend you guys for, uh, a great job on this project. Um, I think this was, this was a, a good example of a good collaboration from everybody around here. Um, I think that there was a ton of work. And I mean, there's so much you guys went through and you guys brought in a lot of great people here, um, to make this happen. And I feel like we've made a good choice right here. Um, I think the only question that I have for you is, do you guys feel satisfied? Do you guys feel like this is the, I mean, you're the ones that were working with them quite a bit?
Yeah, totally.
Yeah, definitely.
The second question is, do you think that that camp for, I mean, it, when I, when I looked at camp for, I think that they were probably the biggest risk. Right? Like I felt like we were taking, we were taking a little bit of a risk by going with them. And I like that. I think that they're, I think that they're gonna be able to deliver something, but do you guys feel that they're gonna be able to deliver a solid product when, when we're finished with this, especially after your last little meeting?
Yeah, I mean, I think it comes down to their partnership too. Camp for is a photography, videography production company mostly. And we need that, um, in a pretty huge way. And Tourist is based on the knowledge of Alexandra Fuller, who was at Struck and developed the Ninety-Five Campaign. And so I think that both of those two strengths will be really important for us.
I mean, I can say just for myself, it was, when we came to the original meeting after we had all thirty-six, yeah, where Tourist was actually my, my first pick, right? And I mean, and, and I let it go. I completely forgot about it because, you know, as things went along. And as we went on, I think it was, it was the way that they told the story through pictures. Um, they really did. I mean, some people can, can tell you exactly what, what it is and then some people shouldn't. And I think they really did a good job.
Yeah, I'd say, uh, we, I mean, it was already said, we have three really good candidates. Yeah, and we kind of couldn't go wrong with any of them, but they have different strengths. And, um, I'd agree that they're visual storytellers and in this day and age, that's a real strength that can uh, tell the story of Moab and contribute to our marketing efforts.
And I really like the name. You may probably know what Camp for is, right?
Yeah, of course.
Famous dirtbag climber camp in Yosemite. So, there you go.
And I only think. Dirtbag.
Yeah, dirtbags.
Anything further? All right, I am, before I call for a vote, I will say that I'm also looking forward to this and to the next item as well as trying to help us with what we're in a, an economic slump here, or you could probably call it worse than that even. But I'm hoping that this starts the needle back to where the county could see a little bit of positive growth because this, this is, um, a very uncomfortable position to be in, to constantly be having to talk about cuts, budget cuts, remind people that we're, our budget is suffering right now. So it, it'll be nice to maybe see the county turn back around a little bit. But with that, I will, um, call for a vote. All those in favor? Uh, passes six to zero with Commissioner McGann absent. And we will move on then to the next one for you folks. Um, search.
Thank you.
For Moab Office, uh, Tourism Director. Oh, this one's with Tess. I thought it would have seemed about us, but.
Tess is on, yes, and she is, she is disposed at this time, so she won't be able to join.
But you guys sent her PowerPoint, right?
Personnel Services recommended Horizon Hospitality to provide that search. Uh, the range of the cost of that is dependent upon the annual salary of the person selected. Uh, but that ranges from nineteen thousand to thirty-one thousand. There's a one-year guarantee on the placement that if that person doesn't make it, then buy that search. Um, Ian. Um, there were several search firms that were considered. Um, yes.
Oh, I was gonna, yeah, finish, finish up, Mark.
Okay. There were several search firms that were considered. Um, Horizon Hospitality is specifically geared toward the hospitality industry or the Moa director. Uh, and that also weighed into that decision recommendation. Um, yeah, again, they say they weren't the highest, they weren't the lowest, but they were directly related to the hospitality.
Just repeat what the, what it, what it, what it cost.
Yes.
Just at the beginning of.
The range is from nineteen thousand to thirty-one thousand. And again, this, um, will not be a general fund expenditure. It will be Moa fund or TRT funds.
That's my.
Can be used a lot, yes.
And then there was a one-year guarantee.
Yes.
Okay, Jaco, I think.
Thanks.
Mike, I honestly.
Uh, Mike's got his hand up permanently, so.
Yeah, he's, he's, doesn't have blood, blood anymore, just hanging out.
Uh, I, the, the question I had is since this, this is, this position is, um, funded from TRT, I think a hundred percent the salary. Would, uh, the promotional TRT also pay for the search service?
I, I'm sorry, yes. Yes, okay, yes. And, and we have consulted with the state to make sure that that's the case. I'm sorry, yes, yes, yes. And and we have consulted with the state to make sure that that's the case.
Okay, Mike.
In this search, have we gotten any current applicant applicants, uh, to this position?
No, because it hasn't been advertised to this point because we were looking at search firms. Are we, we will advertise it and any that we get in, if you select this firm, we will forward those to the firm to consider.
Okay. You know, we hope that we would get some and and partner with the partner to this stuff.
And do we have any timeline that we're looking at?
Um, we have the possibility of seeing results within the first, after the first two weeks. After that firm is selected.
Good. And so tonight will be the start of that clock.
In the morning.
Okay, in the morning.
Possibly see some.
All right, so, um, I guess we're looking for a motion from something, right? If they don't have one spelled out, but I think the recommendation is for Horizon, is that the name of?
Yes.
With Horizon as a search firm for a key sector for the. Lab office tourism for the range between nineteen and thirty one thousand dollars.
Motion by Commissioner Martinez, second by Commissioner McCurdy. Any further discussion?
I think Tess is online if you want to ask her any questions now. She just barely got online.
I, I don't have any questions.
Uh, Tess, what's your feelings with Horizon?
Hi there, everyone. First off, I apologize for my technical difficulties. I've had, um. The, I've been paying my tokens to the travel gods, whatever that means today, but. Um, I, I've had great conversations with Horizon. I've been impressed. By their ability to balance both more of that. Very personable customized approach as well as just their industry expertise. Um, they've been really lovely to communicate with and I was the most impressed just by, um. Their, you know, customized, uh, search plans. Their customized approach to recruitment based on the client, i.e. us as as the employer. Um, as well as their communication. So I, I assume that what I, what I heard, and again, I apologize, I logged on a little late. But, um, I, I'm excited about us working with them.
Thank you. All right. No further discussion. All right, I'll call for a vote. All in favor? Passes unanimously for Horizon as our search. Office of Tourism.
Chairman, we'll let the, uh, the county attorney review, yeah, those agreements.
Okay, thank you. All right, we move on to the funding request for the housing task force via Grand County Housing Subcommittee. Commissioner Hadeen.
And can I have Caitlin and Ben come up? Are you guys okay with that? Um, so I'll just provide some quick context, but let them answer any more specific questions. So the housing subcommittee, which is Mike, Brian and myself have been working on. One of the first things that we did was. Um, do a priority list of what we felt was needed. And this was one of the items was to basically have update the housing pipeline. And so in in that we brought, um, what I consider to be the experts in the county on that. Uh, Ben Riley from Hsu and Caitlin Meyer from Mackel. And so in our discussion, it was kind of like, well, what, what do we see as the greatest need? And in so they're asking for fifteen thousand five hundred bucks. This money is in budget. So last year in the two thousand twenty four budget, Mary put aside or asked to put aside a hundred thousand for affordable housing initiatives. And so what this would provide is looking at the housing pipeline to inform future decisions around typology. A development needed. And again, this was a priority of the sub, subcommittee. Um, Sherry was here earlier with Mack Holt and she said, so what's next? And I think this is a really great step in moving towards, you know, the what's next is first of all figuring out what do we need? Um, so this will allow that to happen. So do you guys want to add anything to that? Please feel free. I was brief.
Sure. I, I think you, you said a lot of what I would have said, um. Here more so on the housing task force side, um, as a participant in the subcommittee. Um, also wanting to explain the, the task force side briefly, the task force was created in two thousand nine. Federal agreement between city, county and Hsu to implement the housing plan. Um, so this is, the pipeline is very much in alignment with that, um. And so part of this request is to support implementing the housing plan on a broader scale. Um, doing community events like what we did with the town hall, uh, be able to continue to grow those, um. But yeah, I, I think Sherry talked about that. We talk about that a lot, Ben and I and, um, myself and the Mackel board. About wanting to make sure that as we continue to build, um, that we are supporting the wants and needs of the county and the residents that live here. Um, and the best way for us to be able to do that is to. Understand the data, understand qualitative and quantitative. Even the task force ran a second annual housing survey this year that gives us qualitative data. Um, we earlier this year requested RCG funds, um, for building on to our housing dashboard. Um, and all of this is to create more tools and for all of us sitting here, watching online to people understand what's actually going on in our market. Particularly in rural areas, census.gov does not provide us, uh, to have in order to understand how to. Address our housing problems, so. Um, so it's kind of on us to to figure out what that looks like. And so this, this request is to answer that first question of. What's happening? What, what do we see that's coming? Um, and I think from there we'll be able to create more tools to figure out how to. Move forward with the rest of that funding and be able to spend that well, in a way that benefits the community.
Yeah, I'll just add, I mean, we put together some priority list and there's a lot of things on here and I think that the pipeline. Services the foundation for all of that. We've talked about the public private partnerships, talking about county owned land, talk about deed restrictions. Single family homes, rental units, there's a lot coming down the pipeline as I think most of you know, a lot of tax credits that just got awarded. Uh, so I think the basis for everything on our priority list really revolves around what we need to build and where we need to build it, so. I think that's kind of the basis of the request, um, is to, to try to. Get that information. So you guys are better informed for if we're talking to public private partnership or so housing is better informed. Uh, what's our, what's our next building typology? What's our next development? Uh, where's potentially the next right crossing potentially going to be, you know, if we talk about what's next, um, so. I think that's kind of the, again, the foundation of all, all of these things that are on our working group list and. We're hoping to. Hire somebody on a contract basis with those funds to basically comb through a lot of data, you know, building permits. Certificate of Occupancies, you know, all these things and and try to get and provide you all with like a deep, a good presentation that will. You know, say. What type of housing is being built? What kind of people are being, are being built for, um, you know, is it, is it high end? Is it a high end luxury apartments, tax credit housing? Is it affordable rentals? Is it high end, single family homes? You know, those are the things that we want, that Hsu wants to learn. I think that the county probably wants to know as well, so that way we're making sure we're tackling the, the problem in the right area.
Right, and you were also, sorry, you were also in that meeting, so do you want to add any context?
No, no, I just want to kind of maybe go over a little bit. So it's, it's ten thousand and five thousand five hundred. And then in the way that I looked at it, because it had to break it down simple, a little bit more simply, is we're looking at basically the supply and the demand. Right? And and how did that break down? The ten thousand would have been for the, for the study on the supply. And then the five thousand would be for, I'm trying to get the breakdown a little bit. I, you gave me a sheet and I've lost it. Um, I just wanted to go over real quick what that breakdown was of, of where, of where those funds are going to be spent. And also we'd be looking for city matches on that as well, correct?
Sure.
It's five fifty five hundred is what we're asking for, for the study. I mean, we're trying to find, uh. We're, we're thinking that if we can find somebody, again, it's really just combing through data and working on Excel spreadsheets for. A few weeks, you know, so trying to find somebody to subcontract work for that. Uh, but then ten thousand going to the housing task force to kind of support, you know, like the events that we had, uh. To be able to give out that information once we gather it, right? You know, that and other information, you know, it also has money in there for the dashboard, which is. We think is a valuable tool and, you know, these are all things that we want to be able to get that information and be able to display it in a good way. So you all know, it's very clear to you all, sort of, sort of, Grand County citizens, what's, what's happening.
And and I wasn't, I wasn't able to attend the. Guys had, um, the community outreach event. It's appear that someone from the city was able to speak out about what's kind of coming down the pipeline there. So is that data already available? Are we only looking for the county right now?
Um, the county will take a lot of that effort. I think, yeah, Corey Sherliffe, the community development director has. Put more work into developing that. And so I think that that will be the basis through which we design this. I think another part of this, we don't want this to be just a one time analysis of what's happening right now. Um, I think part of this funding is really going towards creating a system of how city and county report on an, uh, quarterly basis. Um, you know, kind of tangentially, um, as we're looking at state funding. Um, state is going to require regular updates and reporting on housing plans in order to access some new. Um, infrastructure funding that they're looking to create. Um, and so I think the more we can get consistent in reporting and making that easier, the more we will have this as. An evergreen resource, um. Yeah, and so Corey, Corey has done that. He actually is on hunting permit for the next month, so.
Also I had that, I think he's, they're, they're kind of crude numbers. From Corey, like, I don't think he's got that solidified. I mean, he had a lot of off the cuff things and a lot of things that may or may not happen and. Uh, it was not very specific data, uh, necessarily.
Well, I move to approve the request for the housing task force of fifteen thousand five hundred, affordable housing budget funds.
I'll second. Motion by Commissioner Martinez, second by Commissioner Hadler. Uh, and then you were asking to speak, was that please or possibly if you reminded me you were the second.
Yeah, I think this is, I think this is, I, I can't recall having spent any of that hundred thousand dollars. I, I thought not, so that it isn't a budget. I think it's exactly what we had, uh. What we were intentioning when we put that money aside, I think we get great value out of, out of, out of this amount of money, especially, uh, since. You've got some, uh, volunteers and I very much appreciate the volunteer effort too. I know it's. The button beyond, um, so very comfortable desert giving this money towards, towards this. And hope we can, uh, find another good use for the other, uh, eighty four thousand five hundred.
Uh, being part of committee, I would really like, or the subcommittee, I would really like, uh, to. If we do find a person, uh, that's willing to take on the work, uh, to set out hard guidelines to what we're looking for. I want to know, I mean, you guys have heard it from me before. I want to know what we have. I want to know where, where we will be in the next three years, five years, ten years, just with current building. Uh, current expected build out. Not to mention, uh, in just thinking about this, um, we've changed some land use policies, uh, here before, like HDHO. Uh, I want to know. Tied into that also that if. Units are available, I want to know the restrictions that are on those units also, if restrictions are in place. Uh, it really. There could be a thousand homes, but with an income restriction of thirty eight thousand, it really rough to get into. Uh, especially even with McDonald's period. So I, I need to know that information. I gladly support the, uh, amount of money, uh, that's been asked for, uh, and. I would have probably changed it to fifteen thousand five hundred just for the study. Uh, before doing more community events, I'd like to know where we're at, where we're going to be, but, uh. Still support it. Well, let's, let's continue to talk offline. Make sure that we're getting you. Same page of what we, what we want. I mean, Hsu is wanting the same thing. Again, like I was saying, we're. In the, in between development project at our skylines opening and we're looking for our next, and we want to know, should we be building? What and where? So I think we're on the same.
And it'd be vital information for Macold, Hsu, the, uh. Uh, ADO program, I, I mean, a lot of us.
Yeah, I mean, ideally this will go on the dashboard, so this is, you know, relevant and, you know. Information that people can access, developers can access that. I mean, I think it'll be. Good, good information for, for profit developers, everyone.
And just because on the, for the RCG grants, you guys had spelled out pretty good for the mom housing dashboard. So I'm just making sure this is encompassing those needs, so.
This is just a thought here in the current fiscal situation that we find ourselves in. Just because there's a hundred thousand sitting there doesn't mean we need to spend it. So if we are going to spend it. I would like to make sure that the city is matching that because I know you're asking them. So I think it's important that we get both entities tied into this. Um, I, I thought that it was a little vague on what the study was going to do too. And then I, I also had some questions. I know the subcommittee met. And that if we're going to follow procedure, I believe on the county subcommittee, there were three people there. That would mean three people would vote on the priorities and it seemed like there were other entities that were voting.
He didn't vote on the priorities. We did the priorities like in January.
Okay, okay, it was just my understanding that other people had voted in that funding is what I was. So I, I think that as the subcommittee, we want to be the ones voting on that subcommittee. And then following up, I mean, this housing task force, guys, I think this is a great idea. But what I really think we also need to be doing with that task force is supporting the county's priorities. And those are shifting a little bit and I want to make sure that we're encompassing all housing. I understand that both of you are working on great projects that meet one niche, one niche. Excuse me. And so I, I want to make sure that we're looking at the big picture here when you do a study and I know you mentioned that, but I'm. Reiterating it because it's extremely important to the current mission majority. And so there, there are things moving forward that we want your support on and we want your help looking to where we can start. Moving this in a little bit different direction than what's been in the past and. All of your goals are awesome where you're at, but we've got to start looking at some other ones and we're not always going to be able to fit people into just in a royal. Situation along. So I, I'm looking for a little bit bigger expansion and then also hopefully that we can. Work something in to make sure that the city matches and we're getting a good bang for our buck here.
Well, it's always been our priority to find out what the, I mean, I've been on the subcommittee from day one and I, I've said every meeting, I want to know what you. You know, I mean, make sure that you have opinions that you, you know, pass them to Brian or Mike or Trish, you know, so that way. We want, that's, that is the point of the subcommittee is to make sure that we're getting what you want.
Exactly. I appreciate that. So, yeah, and I know Brian, you wanted to say, but that. That, I was speaking for Brian and Melody and Mike and myself who currently are trying to move this forward and I know others are as well, but. It, we, we want to look at all housing. We want to see what niche we can fill for every different level in this. Community and it's been one of my biggest complaints for a long time is that sometimes we're focused on only affordable housing. And then what used to be affordable housing when I started in Moab is being bought up all the time by people that come in and tear it down. And then build a fancy home because we're not allowing them to build somewhere. And so there's, there's just this. Market that needs to be met and we, we can't just meet one portion of it. We've got to be looking at the whole picture. So I appreciate it. Brian, go ahead.
Yeah, and just, you know, as, as we kind of discussed in the housing, uh. Subcommittee, you know, just evergreen, evergreen in this process, making it sure so it's something that's repeatable. You know, when I first came in, I came and looked at the housing plan. And it's like my first question, and I'm sure everyone's first question, well, how are we doing now, three years later? And it's like, well, we don't know. And so I just want to make sure that, that what, what we're doing right now is setting up that system. So that in three years later, when someone comes in, they go, look, we, we, this is what the supply or the demand was. You know, back in twenty twenty two, this is what the demand now is in twenty twenty five. And here's what we built, here's how things are going, so we can see how that trend is moving along and making sure that we're meeting.
I, that's the intention.
Yeah, thank you. Mike, uh, subcommittee, Hsu, Macold.
We need to get someone from San Juan involved also. It is across county lines. It's next door to us. We, we've got to know what they're doing with housing, where they're going with housing. What's on the, I mean, part of the study should be how many houses they're building also, or how much commercial space. So, I mean, we. This is just talking to everyone in one room. We need to get someone from San Juan on, on this also.
It's a great idea. All right, let's see, remind me, we had Commissioner Martinez make the motion, Commissioner Hadler, second. Do we have any further discussion? Seeing none, I'll call for a vote. All in favor? Passes unanimously. Thanks, folks.
I mean, Ben, are you really excited about it?
Good.
Good.
Thank you.
It'll.
All right, we will move on to number eleven, resolution in support of public lands, Commissioner Hadeen.
So, um, I have, I'm a part of this Western Leaders Network, which is leaders across the Intermountain West. Um, they have been encouraging communities that are dependent on public lands to do resolutions. And that's where this idea came from. The resolution is in there and you're welcome to read it. But it's basically acknowledgement that we as a legislative body are deeply concerned about the economic vitality of tourism. And thus the backbone of our industry and, and public lands, um, depend, are the backbone of this industry and the health of these public lands. Public lands are of extreme importance to amenity-driven communities such as ours. Um, what they do for us is attract and retain not only visitors, but also residents that come for the beauty of our surrounding lands, but also the quality of life that it provides for all of us. Public lands provide a thriving economy, an outdoor recreation, livestock production and resource extraction, producing jobs and in strengthening our GDP. Public lands provide for us health and well-being um, for all visitors and residents. And public lands provide clean water, clean air and wildlife resources. And so this is simply an acknowledgement of this. Um, so I would like to make a motion to approve the Grand County Resolution Supporting Public Lands as presented.
Motion by Commissioner Hadeen, second by Commissioner McGann. Comments? Discussions? I, I will start that off. And I would have to say that I'm not in support of this. I think that as we continue to move forward with our acquisition of the Umtre project, to some degree, this is trying to tell our federal delegates how to do their job. And so I, I would recommend that we not vote in favor of this. We're specifically asking Senator Lee. I know that Curtis ran the bill, but we need Lee's support as well. And I you know, I just spent a couple of days with some of their staff, really just one day, but we had dinner with them as well. I think that an effort to work with those people rather than continue to come out in a form that is basically against what they're doing, maybe on some other agenda items, not the way that we're going to go about acquiring the Umtre property. It's important that we work with our federal representatives. And I know that Jacques and Brian and Mike have all been back there to do so. And I think it's important that those efforts are continued, that we continue to work with them, whether it's on the Umtre project or something else. There's um, just too much at stake here to be doing something that has a slight tone, I would say, that is a negative towards a certain senator specifically, but I, I think that there's other options that really we can look at. And I think we all received the email, um, just came in yesterday or today. I don't even remember anymore. Um, Utah Public Lands Council that's going through um, UAC. And I think there would be far more value in us, um, working with that group, which works across the entire state to protect all of our public lands and our rights on those public lands as a group. I would think that Grand County is, with all of the commissioners should be involved in protecting that at the state level. Before we get to where we're up at the federal level. So I think Mike was next and Jacques and then Trish.
Uh, Trish's thoughts on uh, the uh, I thought it was pertaining to the email that we got a, a couple of days ago, or this, this I, I of the Public Lands Council.
Oh, no.
Um, what's your thoughts on, I mean, uh, Utah Public Lands Council is backed by twenty plus. Uh,
I haven't looked into them. I mean, I do know some of their board members fairly well, specifically Trevor Barnson. Um, so yeah, I mean, I could talk to him. I think that would be interesting. I, I, he's a producer that I know fairly well from the Beamer area.
Okay.
Um, via working with the Division of Wildlife. So I could, I could, I could talk with him.
And I, I say that because I would want Utah's interests, uh, uh, Ewak, a bigger voice, uh, Utah Public Lands, uh, Council. Bigger hammer, swinging up the legislature. That, that's, I mean.
I mean, if you, there has been, been a few counties that have been the state of Utah that has passed a similar resolution. There's actually did include, I tried to be very, very conscientious about not talking about selling public lands because I know that that's a hot topic. I tried to really take out in anything that would, I don't think the tone at all pertains to pointing out a certain senator. I worked very hard to make it simply that we acknowledge, you know, the importance of our lands and all of the economic uh, vitality that it brings to us. And, and so I disagree with the cons, the, the comment that there is a tone to it. I worked very hard to remove any such tone. But I, I, yeah, I, I acknowledge that. I, I could, I'll reach out to Trevor.
That's.
Yeah, for sure.
I like that.
Yeah.
Well, you actually understand. Uh, with that, sorry if I'm taking up more time.
That's okay.
Uh, with that, uh, I know for a fact that a, uh, Senator's staffers, I did not speak to Senator uh, Lee himself, but uh, in speaking with Senator staffers, that there would be uh, it, it's not uh, unexpected backlash uh, coming from the public lands de- uh, debate that's been ongoing on a federal level. But uh, it, it would be looked down upon if we, we did point anything at a specific senator, uh, and really active efforts cannot be the Umtre pile. I, I love joining the Utah Public Lands Council and, and I love not affecting where we're trying to get to on the Umtre project. So walking all those lines.
Okay, thank you.
Um, Jacques, you were next in number.
Yeah, and I think, um, I was gonna say what you said, there's nothing about the sale of public lands in there. And I don't, I don't, I don't find there to be particular tone or, or negative uh, pushback towards any one senator. I think this is calling out the value of the lands to uh, to our economy and the need to um, recognize that value. Um, also don't think proving this precludes the other item. I did look at that a little bit. I want to look at it more, but it, I, that organization, am I wrong? Or was that, is that a chief and cattlemen's organization to begin with?
Well, it's a, a couple of the members are definitely producers, that's something that I know.
Much like, I looked into the organization, um, that, I mean, obviously that, that has a small part of Grand County's economy, but not nearly as much as uh, tourism. But again, I don't think that one precludes the other. So anyway, as you could probably guess, I'm in favor of this.
Brian, go ahead and then Mary.
Yeah, just, um, you know, I'm just kind of, I'm trying to figure out what's the, uh, what's the point of this? Like, where are we trying to get at with this letter? What, what, what action are we trying to to uh, create? And I don't see, you know, where this is actually going. I mean, it's, it's a nice letter, right? But I just don't see what, 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 what we're actually going to be trying for with this letter. Uh, and then also I just wanted to ask Mark, Mark, could we put the uh, Utah Public Lands Council on the agenda for the next commission meeting? And I think that we can just put that down for an action item. Thanks.
Um, Mary, please.
Yeah, I, I agree. This is, this is pretty non-controversial. It's tone is, you know, just that we want to pu- we want to support our public lands for many, many reasons. I personally don't see any connection to this and the Umtre project. I don't, I don't imagine this affecting the transfer of that land at all. I mean, I, I, I think that's real far stretch. I think this is a pretty, uh, and public lands are our backbone. And to say that we support them and we want to continue to be taken care of and, and uh, uh, man, uh, you know, paid for, you know, that, that, that appropriate finances are sent our way. I, I, I think that's the purpose is to say we want it to continue and we want public lands to continue to be, hey, you know, they're through different processes that they pay for. Beyond, you know, so I, you know, I don't, and I don't see any connection to the Umtre project.
Anybody else? Mike. Uh, direct uh, connection is actually, I was like, by, uh, encourages the Utah, sorry, now therefore be it resolved. Down on section two encourages the Utah congressional delegation to oppose any legislation that would negatively impact public lands. Uh, that speaks directly at Senator Lee's uh, previous workings. And again, would not want unsupportive uh, natures on the Umtre project.
Saying Lee is negatively impacting public lands.
But it's gonna sound like. I'm saying that encouraging the Utah congressional delegation to oppose any legislation. Uh, I would not want, in any way want to tell them what to do when we're asking them for Umtre.
Brian, go.
Going to make a comment, Josh. I mean, I'm going to have to say, this has been five times I've interrupted people and spoke out of turn. I mean, I, I, I really would like to see if, if we're gonna, if we're gonna abide by this, let's all try to abide by it. Otherwise, like, let's just all talk to each other whenever we want.
Is there any further discussion on this one?
No, I said, I was just gonna call for a vote.
Just wanted to say one more thing. And as far as going back to Washington DC and working with people on not just the Umtre project, but other public land situations, I've probably done that part that anybody else on this dais.
Um, I don't think anybody was discounting your service. I was encouraging others, I think, is the way that I meant that to come across.
Oh, it did.
It, it certainly is an encouragement to spend time with them, whether it's on the river with their staff, or whether it's back in DC, or whether it's up at the state. There's a real high value in working with our federal and state leaders. Melody, did you have?
Yeah, I just went up on the last comment. So I absolutely agree with the top half of this letter about how it benefits public lands of Great Grand County and all the things that you had. Just then when we get to the part where let it be resolved, um, those are where I find that I don't think sending negative. Um, and it's not, like I said, you were really careful to not create a negative tone. And it did seem very, very neutral as I was reading it, but I still can't support sending something to sell them what, what to do when we have the Umtre file.
Okay, so in the future though, I am going to just make the statement, I'm not picking on you. When I do send it out and I ask for feedback, if you would have given me that feedback, I may have modified it. I try, I try when people give me feedback on letters, I do modify things to my goal is to have them pass. You know, I've put a lot of time and effort. And so I'm just throwing that out. I do try to put out letters if I am going to put something and I ask for feedback and people don't give me feedback. I sometimes wonder if my email works because I send emails all the time and get no responses. So maybe they, it doesn't. I'll check with Matt, but you know.
Check out, Melody, I, I know she kind of took over you.
Yeah, I'll do, I'll do better. I know, comment, you did, I did respond to you one time. You did fix the letter. I will do better. I'm responding to you. I'm, I appreciate that.
Mary.
If we, if we took out, uh, number two in the there force, uh, would that make it palatable? For everyone. I mean, then it's, then it's extremely neutral. We were recognizing multiple use, we're urging federal management to continue our collaborative efforts with, you know, so, uh, and we express a, a, it's strong support for the continued uh, federal management and stewardship of the public lands with Grand County. So if that would make it palatable, I would like to, you know, see if, see if Trish wanted to just amend her motion to say uh, with the removal, uh, uh, the there, the number two in the there force, is that something?
I would do that if it would pass, but if it's not going to pass, then just move on.
I, I, I would, you know, I think that's what everybody's concerned about. And, and otherwise, I think it's, it's uh, just to acknowledge that the public lands are important to us.
I'm not in favor of it. Um, I think public lands are important to everybody on this dais. We all spend time either roaming in it, recreating in it, working in it. It's, it's part of every one of our lives, but continually be putting these out there just almost feels like a political statement. And so I, I'm not in favor of it.
I, I don't feel like it's a political statement. It's extremely important to me. You know, I am a professor of Environment Society within the College of Natural Resources. It's extremely important to me. And, and, and hopefully you guys also understand I come from a very diverse interaction with public lands. I grew up in a logging family. My brother's still a logger. My dad was also a cattlemen. So my connection to public lands isn't just climbing or climbing or hiking. It's, it's also, you know, extraction. And so it's, it's important to me. Obviously, I keep beating the drum.
Mike.
I want to tell you, I'll get better at answering the emails. I, I, I could have made, I could have made it clear, uh, clear points to you. I'm sorry about that.
That's okay. I appreciate that. And thank you both for acknowledging that. Thank you.
All right, those in favor? Those opposed? Obvious fails. For opposed Commissioner McCurdy, Commissioner Martinez, Commissioner McCandless, Commissioner Winfield. We will move on to resolution repealing and replacing resolution number thirty-four twenty-one, approving a special election for November four, twenty twenty-five. Commissioner McCandless.
So we already passed this seven to the last meeting. Um, but after review with the Canyonlands Healthcare Special Service District, they were concerned about the wording. Um, where it says a the, the Canyon's Healthcare Special Service District was a long-term care facility in Grand County, and they are not, they operate, help operate it. And so they were concerned with that language that was going to be unfair to the voters. And so that's why I bring this back before us today is just change that language instead of saying a long-term care facility in Grand County. And putting which operates the long-term care facility in Grand County. And adding there also and provides resources for other critical healthcare needs. And those are items that are listed in state statute, which all of the entities are listed in the resolution. And it does state that this, but these funds can be allowed as state statute. And so anyways, that's why it's coming back before us. We just need to change the language, um, specifically because I want us to look like the intelligent people that we are. We are the, um, we are the I can't even think, but anyways, we're the lawmaking, we, we, we are the authority of Grand County. And we want to make sure that, um, we're accurate in areas of expertise for voter trust and confidence in our civic leaders.
You can go, Steve. Just, uh, Barb and I did both look at this. It looks good. Um, for a word search, he made a revision, changed to it, which I couldn't see the difference. Uh, he deleted one comma and a left parenthetical. So if you guys can find those in the document, that would be awesome. I could not. Um, instead of, additional document, we're going to do the word search or the grammar search, grammar search afterwards. Um, so those are the two changes that came from legal period and period comma and left parenthesis or left parenthetical, we're, we're missing. One other note, there is the word including, um, so the language states to be used as allowed by state statute. Including to help uh, fund the operations and then it lists some organizations. Those are not the only places that it could be utilized for the funds. As you all know, there's six categories within that breakdown. The sixth one is the combination of the previous five. I believe it's uh, search and rescue, avalanche, EMS. And then there's a, a, a fire and then medical. Uh, and, and law enforcement, search and rescue. Uh, so it's a combination. Yeah.
It's always.
Always, it's always. So it's a combination of all those, but the call out doesn't limit it to one of those things. That word including means that it's not just restrictive to that group. It could apply to all based on state statute. So it means legal review. Just noting that I know folks have, uh, have expressed some concern about that, but that's uh, the language that we use. And additionally, in the whereas clauses, we do call out that under the current law, um, those, those particular uh, entities are the ones that are committed under statute. So if you have other questions, please just.
Um, I'm not sure if Jacques or Mary.
Yes, it's Mary.
I was just saying that, yes, it, it, in the resolution, it states that those other entities are included in it's, maybe, but uh, it is the fire, the fire and EMS and healthcare special service district that are, are needing the money, using the bunch right now. And that's why we're asking for them. So I think it's really uh, very clear to the, uh, uh, voters that at this time, that's where we want to place the money.
Yeah, um, I move to approve the resolution repealing and replacing resolution number three, four, two, one, and calling for a special election on November uh, fourth, twenty twenty-five. uh fourth, twenty twenty five.
Second.
Motion by Commissioner Hadler, second by Commissioner McGann. Further comment?
I'd like to end have my motion uh reflect the grammatical uh changes that Stephen called out.
Okay, fine.
If we can find it. I was gonna say, maybe I found one. I don't know. Whereas two thousand twenty five is a municipal election year and therefore a ballot to be administered. That 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 sentence maybe should end with a period and not a colon.
See that, yeah.
Okay, so that that's the only thing. And I didn't find that myself. I I had um Grammarly do it.
Grammarly.
That's right.
Mike, please.
Uh I I asked question before, uh, does this, does this come across to a Grand County citizens as every one of these districts can get that money? Like the voters need to know that solid waste is just on that is on that list just as much as EMS is. That that's my only holdup. I love putting it to the voters. I love everything. But when someone votes on it, they need to know trash is just as uh applicable at words uh as EMS in the funding request. Election letter, hey.
Um, one suggestion I have um that I'd be happy to sort of facilitate is there's an insert that goes in with the ballot. Um, and there could be information regarding the ballot measure, or there will be information regarding the ballot ballot measure in that insert. Um, and there could be more lengthy description of this allowable statute uh in the insert. Just a suggestion I'm offering.
Sounds good.
Yeah, uh, thanks.
Yeah, I I supported this going on the ballot because it allows the voters to weigh in on this. What what I don't support, though, is the way that it's unclear. And I appreciate what you're saying there, Gabe. That would help alleviate for me a little bit because what we've got is three out of six entities named who I agree that they need the money right now, Mary, but next year and the following year, that's the commission's responsibility. And so what I really see is an opportunity as commissioners here and putting a process together so that yearly people come back with a request with a plan, with their financials, with a an actual need laid out. And I think that we're in that process. I know that Andy sent some stuff across today. I believe Melody forwarded it to me. But I I think with the current economic crisis that we find ourselves here in the county, it just requires that we make sure not just ourselves, but the entities that we fund are doing a good job of being fiscal with their money. And that needs to be more than just a request when it comes before the budget committee. It needs to be with a plan and it needs to be laid out with what exactly are those needs so that we can look at their financials, we can look at how they're doing, where their spending is in comparison to the revenues and 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 look across those numbers. And I just think there comes a fiscal responsibility to the county commission to be aware of that rather than it just being a request and we all decide, okay, we're gonna vote EMS and vote it in. I I'm looking for a little more than that. And in general, I'm I'm against any increase in taxes. And I'm appreciative that the voters get to pick whether this passes or not because uh otherwise I I'm against taxes. I'm especially against taxes when we don't show that we're cutting our budget or that we're cutting and trimming to meet the situation that we're in. And that's that feels a little bit like this right now. I just um I think the only saving grace, I guess, for me is the fact that the voters will make the decision. So I'm I'm yeah, I'm reluctant to vote on the name, on the verbiage change without including all six. But again, I I see Gabe's point here in that helping move this forward.
Yes, sir. And and just another note, on page, it's page two, one, two, three, four, uh paragraphs down on the whereas. It does state that the tax, such tax collections will be allocated by the Grand County Commission as per Utah Code fifty nine dash twelve dash eight oh two six C. Such allocations will shall be distributed on a quarterly basis. So this this will be done by the commission on a quarterly basis. The listing of the names down below doesn't give a predetermined equal third allocation to each of the named entities. So I I don't, I just don't want there to be confusion that you guys have already done that. You guys still have to do the allocations on a quarterly basis to whatever entities and whatever manner that you guys wanna do. And you guys still have to come back and vote on this as a commission.
After the ballot.
Correct.
Yeah, and so you're you're saying that quarterly it will come before us for those allocations in a vote.
Is I wait for clarification, though.
The money's first quarterly.
Quarterly. This first quarterly, but allocated annually.
Annually, we'll decide.
Right.
Thank you.
And okay, there that was where Mike. All right, Mary, sorry if.
It's 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 going to be those three entities that will be working hard to, you know, to to convince the voters that this is worthwhile. So having them named on is to me appropriate. So otherwise, it came to us and asked for.
They were all here.
Any further Jacques?
Yeah, yeah.
I'm sorry, but.
That's okay. Um, yeah, I I'm I I'm very supportive of the language. I I think it's appropriate. I think that indicates where funding's gonna go. Um, I also I think that we talk about budgeting shortfalls every meeting and how we're we're cutting uh cutting, cutting funding at the counter, cutting uh uh that at the county. And I also kind of regret Billy, you're 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 saying that we're in a financial crisis. I mean, a crisis. I think if we were down like thirty percent, that would be a crisis. Absolutely. We're down a little bit. We're down within your average ebbs and flows of of what people bring in. Um, and I mean, you bring that up at at every meeting. I I get your point. I think we all do. But I certainly wouldn't call it a crisis. I mean, we just spent upwards of two thousand bucks the other night on dinner for for a bunch of people. Like, that's not what you do when you're in an actual crisis, you know, it's it's um hard to hard to do in business. Um, so anyway, that that the tangent. Um, I'm supportive of this. I think the uh I think the wording accurately reflects what we're uh what we are presenting. And again, voters are the ones who are gonna side. It's gonna come back to us. We have a chance to vote on this again. If it passes, big if, uh, so uh and I also appreciate uh Gabe's information about about putting information in the ballot. I think that's gonna be a big part of this for sure.
Okay, Mike and then Brian.
Did I skip you? Sorry. Uh, thanks, Gabe, for the information in there. That really have uh brought my decision up. Uh previously stated, a forty million dollar operating budget a year. Uh, six for six point one percent is a lot of forty one billion dollars. Uh, uh, at least to me, but uh thank you for the clarification, Gabe.
Brian. Yeah, so just a couple of things. So first off with this, um, I I have a question. Lost it. So just on this, this this actual item, before I get off on all the other tangents, is what are the other critical healthcare needs? I mean, that's the big thing that was mentioned, right? That I wanna know what it is that we're, go ahead, Melody, thanks.
So it's a hospital. So in that language, it says for costs associated with a federally qualified health center within the county. So that would be the care center currently. There in the works of doing an assisted living facility. I mean, that's the master plan that is being worked on. And I don't know what 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 will all come about out of that, but that money can go towards assisted living facility, um, a freestanding urgent care center. So we have that right now. Um, we, I don't think that the healthcare district is giving money to urgent care currently. But they are giving money to a rural county healthcare facility within the county, which is our hospital. So um the ca- the Canyon's Healthcare Special Service District does give them the hospital. They do give money to the care center. They also um have given money to EMS. Those are those other, um, it can be used for acquisition of land for a center clinic or facility or design, construction, equip equipment or furniture of the center clinic or facility. So those are all those other healthcare things. So it doesn't necessarily mean it's currently. I mean, it's hospital and care center currently. Um, and it can go to future, which is where they are gonna come and show, I mean, where they would need the money is is in those kind of things. But and also with, I mean, we don't know what's gonna happen with Medicare, Medicaid. I mean, it could all be fine. It could all not be fine. And so they would be able to assist in in those. But those are those other. If you I mean, we could take that out, provides resources for other critical healthcare needs, and it would still be okay if it just said which operates a long-term care facility in Grand County. Um, but I do think it is important because those other critical healthcare needs really do exist and will be future needs. Um.
Are those are those other needs right there? Um, are they contained inside of the state statute?
I just read the state statute to you.
Okay, but I mean, so no, but the well, the other, the other needs right here is is listed. And then inside the state statute, it has another list. Is that correct?
Yeah, that's why I just read to you it inside the state statute for caught all those items that would be those other critical needs.
I'm I'm okay. Yeah, I I understand that those other critical needs are. But so the Grand County provides resources for other critical healthcare needs. So is that the listing back to the state statute again? I'm just getting confused with all the arrows at a point, one, 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 one.
Yeah, I mean, the state statute doesn't say critical healthcare needs, but that's what they take care of.
What I'm asking, let me make a simple question then. Is this last sentence right here, the and provides resources for other healthcare needs, is that going beyond state statute?
Not in there, not in there. If you read their mission statement, their mission statement.
Well, the Milton statement has nothing to do with being on the ballot for state statute.
Do you understand, do you understand what I'm saying is, is right here, you have the state statute. Then we have, then we've listed out, you know, we've listed out Canyonlands Care Center, and then we listed out EMS, and then we listed out fire over here. They're all included inside of the state statute. By adding and other critical healthcare needs, are we adding something that's outside of the state statute?
No, we're not. Because it says a freestanding urgent care facility, rural county healthcare facility, rural health clinic within the county, ongoing expenses of all of those centers. And so all of those are the things that the healthcare special service does, and those are all included in the statute.
That was my question.
Okay.
Sorry, just trying. I'm trying to get a full understanding. And I think that, you know, I I'm I'm gonna start off, I'm gonna make a substitute motion um in in a second. Now, there are no, I move to approve the changed uh uh the resolution repealing and replacing resolution thirty four twenty one proving the special election for November fourth, twenty twenty five with the um um removal of and provides resources for other critical healthcare needs. Um, to me, that that right there just creates more confusion right there. And if we're just trying to, I mean, by saying the Canyonlands Healthcare Special Service District, that lists them right there. It lists the fire, it still lists the EMS, everybody's still included. I think that additional bit right there just creates more confusion. And if it's already included in the state statute, which is which is listed as the primary right there, right? I think that that should be okay. And then just going off onto all the tangents that we had there earlier, I do wanna address. Go ahead.
And you made the substitute motion, right?
Oh, yes, I did.
You need a second. Sorry.
Okay. Do we have a second question?
No, either you make a substitute and and you get a second.
Shut down. I heard that first. But without the answer to my question.
We have a motion. Do we have, making the second still allows the discussion.
Okay, second.
I have a motion by Commissioner, making a second by Commissioner McCurdy to the substitute motion removing the sentence.
Critical and provides resources for other critical he- healthcare needs. Yes, that. Okay, hey, with that, with the exclusion of that wording, can we still allocate money to the that's healthcare district?
Yeah, so the
Okay, the language within the parentheticals, though, is providing additional context of what the Canyonlands Healthcare Special Service District is. That's all, that's what it's doing, right? So having the language there or not, I don't think it's creating, it doesn't say, you know, had it not been in parentheticals, then I think you could maybe have some arguments if you put you know, EMS, buyer, and then ended with the healthcare special service district and and then didn't have the parentheticals and had other healthcare critical health care needs, I think maybe you'd be opening it up. But I think it it applies to only that specific item, but I don't, I don't think it necess- necessitates moving that language. And Bart, I didn't feel like it caused a concern. But that would influence my second. Some melody, a little rough.
So there the concern of the Canyon's Healthcare Special Service District and why they added that language, instead of just having a long term care facility. So number one is people don't know um what Canyon's Healthcare Special Service District does. Actually, I didn't until I've been on the board now for eight months. Um, so, so anyways, which operates so, but they don't, which operates long-term care facility, but that's not the only thing that they do. So people are thinking, oh, I'm only uh voting for the care center, even though it's included in there, you know. But that's why they added the part. I'm fine with which operates if that's what stays. But I think that adding in the provides resource for other critical healthcare needs is important because it isn't, it is not, they do a lot, they do a lot. People don't know what they do. And I think it's it's beneficial language to be in there.
Mary.
But I think it's also what the health district itself wants.
That's what they ask.
Yeah, that's what they've asked. We've had a, the health district asked us to add that so that it's clear that their mission is not only to the uh extended care that they they for years have helped the hospital. Except from the, you know, from the beginning of the tax, you know, boss.
Um, Mike and then Melody.
Okay, so liking, I I gonna go with your word, uh parentheticals on that one?
Inside the parentheses.
Inside the parentheses, uh words. Uh, everything in election integrity gonna be followed along there? And state cha- statute there, Gabe?
Can you repeat that question, please?
Uh, with that, with those words in there. Everything hunky dory with uh election integrity and state statute on uh special elections.
Uh, as it relates to the, um, you know, the administration of elections, uh, that 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 looks good. Yes.
Okay.
Melody.
Um and and I just wanna say on a side note, um, so at the eight months, I have been going to the Healthcare Special Service District. They, I think this is putting a fire under their butt to really get some stuff done. I mean, we have the council and agents that are asking for assisted living facilities. I think it's a need in our community. Um, Houston, so I think that that's a crucial part to put on there because the care center is doing okay. I mean, they're still supplementing them. They're doing good. They wanna extend the care center. We have people that are leaving Moab. Um, so I I think it is a good thing to put on there. And I think that that's gotten them. Um, they're actually super excited uh to get this plan going and moving forward with some stuff, which is really cool because they said, like eight months, we've kind of been just going to meetings, but I think that now that we've got kind of a a mission or something. Anyways, that's a side note, sorry.
Yeah, and then I just wanted to jock uh address something that Jock said. Um, and this came up earlier when we had Stephen Bowles here. And we were talking and he misspoke and I, and you have the email here when he misspoke. And I'd just like to read this right here. A recession is generally defined as a significant decline in economic activity spread across the economy. This is typically associated with two consecutive quarters of negative growth. It is a broader measure of ec- economic uh contraction. An economic depression, right, in contrast, is a more severe and prolonged downturn than a recession. Is characterized by this sustained period of significant economic decline, often lasting for three or more years. Kind of sounds like us, resulting in a total decline of at least ten percent.
We're not close to ten percent. It's definitely.
For the last three years.
Not a depression. It's certainly not a crisis. What, does it have a definition for crisis? It is, sorry, I'm I'm done.
We need, I'm calling, I'm calling for a vote.
Um, thank you, Mary. I'll call for a vote also. On the substitutes here. Those in favor?
Oh, I see where writing's going, but I like, I like what was said on others.
Sorry, those opposed. Motion fails. There's five opposed, Commissioner Hadeen, Commissioner Hadler, Commissioner McGann, Commissioner Winfield, Commissioner Martinez.
And McCandless, right?
Okay, it's moving on then back to a vote on
The original motion.
The original motion. The original motion. Mind me, was it Jacques who made the motion and then Mary seconded?
I think it was, yes, that's right.
I think that's right. Okay, Commissioner Hadler's motion with Commissioner McGann seconding. Is there any further discussion on this vote? Yes, Jacques.
Uh, can I just um ask, Stephen, I believe this would still uh need a five to two pass. Is that correct?
That's correct.
Okay.
Okay, um. I will say that without adding all six entities on this, I'm not going to support the. The change. It's already been passed that it can go before the voters. Um, I wasn't in agreement then. I'm still not in agreement. Without listing all six of the entities clearly. So that it makes it very clear what the county can and cannot, or basically can. A lot of money towards, and I still sit see this as being a little bit unclear, but. I will call for a vote on those in favor of the motion. And those opposed, and that will be um passing six to one with myself opposed, Commissioner Winfield.
Thank you for the extra clarification, Gabe.
Yeah, thank you for that.
I'll get I'll get a draft to you. We'll work on it together.
Okay, so we are moving on to acceptance of the twenty twenty-four Grand County Audit and Financial Statements. This was for the Commission Administrator's Office.
Yes, and the. Audit Committee met, uh John Hadley of Larson, whatever, uh the reports, uh. That was a public meeting, um also, Hadley will be here at the meeting on the second. Uh, or based of Vegas with the commission. Uh, if all approve the audit, um it will be signed and sent to the state. This month prior to September the first.
Okay, and yes, um Brian and then Melody, um.
So I saw the uh email chain going back and forth about the um recommendations that they had, and I was told that those were made. But I have not seen the subsequent note. Is there uh any way that you could maybe either read that out to us, or so that I can see how that subsequent note from?
Sure.
Thanks. Melody.
I just was gonna make a motion to accept the twenty twenty-four audit as presented. You have questions, right? So.
You got a motion, a second?
If you can come to discuss.
So motion by Mary. Motion was by Commissioner McCandless, was it not? Seconded by Mary Bee, two of them over there, I come second by Commissioner McGann. Okay, thank you. Oh, I see. All right, so further discussion.
I just wanna hear what that. So as requested um by Commissioner Martinez, and this was um. This was presented to uh John Hadley of Larson and Company, as well as vetted by uh by Karen Curden. Um as a as a an addition into these statements, uh as a subsequent event note, uh which. That that means if an action was taken, um that's relevant information presented in these twenty twenty-four statements. Uh but before they're accepted, um even though if it happened in twenty twenty-five, which these statements don't directly speak to. However, if it if it's appropriate to include is uh that that, um if there's a convention called a subsequent event note that. Make note of that because it can be relevant, and in this case, uh because it is responsive to the state ours finding letter, uh. And there are other actions that are included in the statement that that summarize that those actions that were responsive to that letter. Uh that's why it's being presented at this time. And so that draft of that notice is follows, uh. In twenty twenty-five, additional actions taken in response to the state ours finding letter dated December second, twenty twenty-four. Apparition of the county commission. Forty thousand seven hundred ninety-one dollars was made from the general fund, the TRT promotion fund in order to reimburse TRT funds. Used to support the Trail Ambassador Program contained within the Grand County Active Trails and Transportation Department.
Yeah. All right, any further discussion? All right, we can vote on the motion by Commissioner. McCandless second by Commissioner McGann. All those in favor? Accepting the audit. Thank you very much. That passes unanimously. Moving on, I believe we were crossing the line to discussions now.
If I may, uh, I think we were gonna bring back, uh.
Yes, thank you. Um, that was F, item F, and I can send it.
Uh, Matty did, uh Matty and Quinn both sent clarifying emails since then, um and I had a couple of remarks. Um, it looked like that that uh required cash match twenty percent. Uh, my calculations say that is what thirty-eight thousand four hundred and sixty-six dollars and forty cents. Uh, that would be um leveraged by uh full-time supervisor staff that the trail guys, I think Kevin and his crew. Uh, they're gonna be out there and the income could be volunteer hours, and they get a lot of volunteers out there. Also, we, this commission approved uh this grant on the eighteenth of March as it's stated. Um, if. When we, when we approve applying for the grant, my, I think my understanding is that if we decline it afterwards, that's a. That's a, that's a bad look, and it tends to affect our ability to go for these grants. Um, I'm I'm satisfied with Matty's explanations on that. And I think that uh I think these are, these are great projects, the projects that are needed, the. Projects that are gonna help with tourism in the county, the projects that are gonna help with, um, you know. Uh, giving locals fun trails. These are trails that, uh for example, the Nike team that Brian and I both have kids on the Nike team. Um, use all the time for practice. There are also trails that are close to town. There's some of the most popular trail systems. Uh, the Raptor Route, the Brands Trails that tourists enjoy. Uh, and as usual, when Moa builds new trails, there's always huge buzz in the uh mountain biking community anyway. Nationally and internationally, so it, so it um helps bring people into the county. So for for those and other reasons, I'm I'm extremely supportive of this. So I'd make a motion to approve this grant contract that will provide funding and non-motorized trail construction maintenance and user education.
Motion by Commissioner Hadler, second by Commissioner Hadeen. Mike, you've got a question?
Yeah. I love the, sorry, dying from all its. I love new trails. I wanna know if a funding source for this is direct. Uh, applicable to uh TRT funding and uh not promotional, but uh the creation of trails. Uh, is that an allowable use of?
I I did not, Commissioner Martinez asked that question.
Yeah.
Uh, previously, I I didn't research it, because we talked with uh and talked with him about the decision not being funded by. Uh, actual monetary, it was just by the salary amounts. But I can follow up with you regarding that.
Yeah. In in future, I I'd like to know if that's an allowable use.
I I know Brian had something and Jacques, and I'll just throw in the mix there real quick myself, but I'm confused. Matty said approximately seventy thousand. Jacques said, I think, thirty-eight thousand. That's just where I'm confused. I don't know if that was your question.
And and that's, and there there's a lot of confusion on this right here, because if you look at the grant, right, it actually lists cash, right? As a seventy-eight thousand dollars, and then it lists the income is ten thousand. Been told that inside of. See if I can look it up here. And see, and inside of the summary, it says budget over you, project hours by full-time. Supervisory staff will be leveraged as the twenty percent cash ma- cash match. And project hours donated by volunteers will be used as the income match. So we're basically saying that the seventy-eight thousand dollars is gonna be our supervisory role.
Yeah, that's the salary.
Yes, salary. Now, all that said, when you look at the agenda summary up there at the fiscal impact, it doesn't really list that right there. And so that's where my question originally arrives from, right? I mean, of course, I, you know, these are all great trails, and I'd love to see all of these projects. We did right here. That's not the the reason I objected. My, the reason I objected is there was, it's not, it wasn't clear. How that money was coming in. I think that maybe that was listed in the financial responsibility right there. When you looked at the. Grant itself, where it lists seventy-eight thousand dollars in cash, it wouldn't be, it wouldn't be so. Well, just so murky. Um, and then another thing that I just wanted to to uh to mention right here. Is is this is made possible because there's a crew available to do that. And that's one thing that we do not have available for the motorized trails. And I think that's something that we need to, as a commission, look into, is how we are able to leverage that type of. That type of supervisory role to get that same kind of maintenance done on our motorized trails.
Yeah, talking. I I know that was a lot, and and I agree with what he's saying there, but I'm still confused about the thirty-five thousand or whatever you mentioned. Seventy-eight in there. It's still not real.
I thought you mentioned the seventy thousand that Matty mentioned was the.
Well, yeah, so now there's.
That's the educational component. So that's the component that she talks about in uh Project Four, if you look into the agenda item. I think that's clearly the, and that she talks about the Trail Ambassadors and Project Education. So when she mentions that seventy thousand. That's the component that could go out of the county to the, to our. As of now, hypothetical nonprofit that's gonna.
Out of the grant money.
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
That's that. Right, so that is pointing at that, and then I think she. Okay, it could be worded better. I think we have a lot of items on our agendas that don't have fiscal impacts that need them. Um. Maybe it is a little bit murky, but but I, it's not that hard for me to understand this when I read through this. It does take a reading for sure. It's not. It it, and I agree with Brian, yeah, that that uh fiscal note should have been noted at the top instead of the bottom. Um, but I still think this is a great uh use of these funds. Uh, we. We have everything in place to do. We've already approved the grant, or we've already approved the application for the grant. And uh signing off on this now, I think is would be a um beneficial thing to all of us.
And so once again, what is the full fiscal dollar amount that this is costing the county?
I think that's a valid, that's a valid question, but it's, it's, it's our supervisory hours, the hours that the the salary that we pay. Exactly. Supervises.
I I've tried to.
Yes, that's it.
Yeah, I got it.
So so there, but to Brian's point, though, I think Brian's point is, well, there is a, there is an actual monetary cost to the county.
Agree.
But it's one that we're going to encourage over the course of the year anyway.
Okay, thank you. That that helps for me. And I'm sorry, I didn't read that whole thing. It was.
No, and I I I tried to explain it, maybe I didn't.
I appreciate it. That that's helps me. Any other questions? All right, did we?
I made the motion, yes. Hadler and Hadeen. First second, Hadeen.
Hadler, Hadeen, motion by Hadler, second by Commissioner Hadeen. All in favor? Motion passes unanimously. Thank you, everybody, for helping to educate me. And we can now move on to the discussion item. Starting with cooperative agreement for dark skies.
Do you mind if I bring Chrissy up to assist with?
I do not mind.
So I would, I kind of took the bull by the horns regarding the dark skies thing. And I started by talking, I can't remember what, how many iterations, but I was meeting specifically with code compliance, like whatever, you know, how can we. Expend these funds, basically bringing people into compliance. Maybe you were there too, Stephen. I can't, I can't remember. Anyway, it doesn't matter. Many, many meetings, and we kind of came to this place where it was like, okay, we're going to send out, you know, Brandon and I were, were together, we're gonna send out. Postcards, we're gonna have, you know, have a little incentive program. People can write in, get two hundred bucks to replace lighting, right? Mick was helping, and he was delineating that time into a different, you know, because I'm like, can you help me do the design on this? He was delineating at times, so I I wanna make sure that that's that's noted. And as he was helping, he's like, gets on this website, and he's like, this program already exists. The Friends of Arches and Canyonlands already runs this program, and the city was feeding money into it. So what we finally decided, and tell me, you know, you can, you can walk over me at any time. Well, we decided it's like, wouldn't it just be easier for them to continue to facilitate the program? We simply put the money that we had set aside for dark skies to them and let them facilitate the program. Brandon can help. You know, whatever it might be, but they've already got a program rolling, so it seemed like. The easiest, you know, system is just to let them continue with that program. So I know you guys had some questions during agenda review, so my apologies for that. Yeah, so the twenty thousand dollars, I think, is the question.
It was in budget, we budgeted last year.
And did budget it for it, because I, no one, no one calls that, and then they were saying there's maybe three thousand dollars in there for postcards or something, so. There.
All I could find was three thousand in the detail, in the bu- in the twenty-five budget details.
Set aside twenty grand somewhere.
It could be in the, in the past, it had been, um. But in the commission discretionary, there is dark sky education listed explicitly, but the line only says three thousand.
I've got a couple of thoughts.
The three bucks.
I had the other. Under review comments, please, because Quinn stepped out. The other, the other things on the contract, when, and Quinn stepped out, so I'm speaking for him. Uh, we were just confused on what Grand County offering technical support and coordination with county staff is needed. Quinn was like, what is that?
Right, Mick had, it was, well, and Mick, and and I guess it's, it doesn't have to be through Grand County, and Mick is actually. On the Friends of Arches and Canyonlands Board, so he was like, oh, I can kind of manipulate the website to. Updated to say now it's Grand County sponsored, not City of Moab sponsored, right? Like, all of those little nuances just to bring it up to date. And that was basically Steve and and I've been talking. So really minor nuances of just, you know, picking that website and. Manipulating it slightly.
I asked Heather's question.
Sure, please do.
Um, and then just when we're, I'm I'm thinking about the twenty thousand, and I'm remembering back when we talked about it before, and I think. I I have complained endlessly about complaints, and you know, that's all my office ever wants.
No.
Prosecute. Um, and so one of the conversations that we had at one point was talking about, and I think Commissioner brought it up. Was the shields over the lighting.
Yeah.
Or the sconces.
Yeah.
And if we're, if we're doing that, are we gonna put some income caps or some things that, okay?
Yes. They have a whole system in place, and I think it was like two hundred and fifty bucks incentive, and you basically just have to provide like the before and after photos, which. Which Brandon would actually do, and then, and then the receipt, and then you'd you'd get a refund.
I just didn't, I wanted to make sure that Hudu or the scenic end didn't get.
Right.
Lightings or the sconces based on this.
I mean, I guess it doesn't matter. Do you remember putting twenty thousand aside for dark skies?
I do remember that. I think it was Kevin's initiative.
I know, but Gabe said it's not in the budget, so if it's not in the budget, that's fine. We'll take three. We'll take whatever you got. I guess it'll be a good start.
So good. I have a few comments. If possible, I I was. Very much in favor when Kevin brought this out for the care approach. I I'm not a big fan of. And I worked diligently with two neighbors that were ready to go to to war with each other, possibly.
Right.
Guns, no, I might be exaggerating, but they were at each other's throats. My personal feelings on this, and I marked the twenty out, said I would be favorable of five thousand. If, if there's zero dollars for administration. Because I think that anybody that is serious about dark skies. Is doing it out of a personal interest, and I don't think we should be paying administration. Well, I'm, just let me finish, please, thank you. Uh, it's a, it is, there are some people who are adamant about dark skies and some people who aren't. I've got a neighbor, his light is always on, and it's bright, and it doesn't bother me. It's just maybe he doesn't like the cats around, maybe he doesn't like the skunks. But I don't think that we should be paying administrative fees if we're gonna donate to somebody. I think it should be. Here's your three thousand or your five thousand dollars. When you've shown us receipts, then we'll consider another. Amount of money, but I I'm, I'm not in favor of administering costs.
So the administrative.
And Melody.
Maybe we'd go to Friends of Canyonlands and Arches and Canyon. To facilitate the program would cost us more than that. Because then you're talking about employee time, which currently we don't have any, we don't have a code enforcement officer. I mean, right now it. Oh, okay, great. Oh, good, 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 okay. You know, you're talking about him having to sit and develop. All of this program that's already in place, and and if it is, is only. Three thousand bucks, you're you're talking about what, four hundred and fifty bucks? I I I I don't. I don't think it's a big cost for them to run the program.
I'm, I'm just not in favor of administrative costs. I know it's a, a big push of theirs for dark skies, so put their money where their mouth is and let them push it. And we'll supply the money for the product. That's what I'm saying is that I'm totally supportive of the product support, but not an administrative.
Well, I, I mean, I guess I'm.
Voting on it now. We're just gathering it and we're throwing everybody's ideas.
I can talk to Steve about it.
And I think that actually was something, um, that I added into the MOU because I wasn't sure based on our discussion, if that was something that we needed.
Right.
But I don't think it was an ask from them. I think, I do think that that was something I put in, cause I didn't know.
But it's just my, I mean,
Yeah.
I work with a nonprofit on the other side of the world and then there's no administrative cost that I'm able to recoup. And if it's because it's something that I'm near and dear to me and I work hard on, it comes out of my pocket.
I wish I could say that, like at the school district, my program, the school district takes eighteen percent of all my grants to administer my program, which is cutting three paychecks. So, I mean.
Specific program.
About twenty grand a year. I know, I know. So I get it. But yeah, I mean, we can just, we're, it's since it's just discussion, we can ask Steve. He might be fine with that.
It'd be nice to have Steve.
It's my turn.
Is the, um, city. So is the city still giving money as well?
I don't, I do not think so. I think they have.
Okay.
And so I think I'm okay with if we give a small amount, because it sounds like at this point it's gonna be a very small amount and maybe we flip flop. Maybe we, we funnel this money for the end of two thousand twenty five and then to two thousand twenty six, we ask the city to then they can take over and we can flip flop.
That's something, I'm in the cities and the counties, so, but then is, is, are we, are we giving this money to county residents outside of the city limits? Are we giving it to city or do we, can we split it and say half of it is used for city residents and half of it's used for county residents? So it's kind of spread all over the county? I mean.
I think their program, I don't, I think when the city was funding, I don't know if it was just.
I bet. Uh, my understanding was it was just county residents.
Right.
So this would just be only county residents, but city residents or county residents? Yeah, I mean, but city residents, yes, you know, so I just think if, if the city was putting in money, then it would be like, okay, well, their money goes to the city residents and our money goes to the county residents outside of city limits. But I'm okay with it going to all of the county, but I think we kind of need to have an allotment of a part goes into the city and a part goes into the county. That way it's not just all getting sucked into the city.
Right.
And we can also ask the city to maybe match ours.
Small amount, probably can't ask.
No, and then they can use that part and the city. The corporate area.
I think they'd be easy with that.
They did ask and they said no.
Oh, and they now, but now. Small, they might be like, fine.
It's still has to go to a vote next meeting.
Yeah, yeah.
Mike, please, I'm sorry.
Oh, I think it's Mary.
Oh, Mary, then Mike, I'm sorry. Mary first, me next.
I find it, but I, I, I think it would be nice when we bring it up, we could have Steve here. You know, then I think some of these questions would be better answered by the person.
I know, did, was he not able to come today?
He wasn't able.
Okay, yeah. Yeah, I just, I know.
That was what we wanted, so for next meeting, when we put it on the agenda, let's have him. Or that come next week meeting, let's push it till meeting can. It's my, my suggestion, cause I think he's. So if he can come next week, we keep meeting when it's presented and flushed out.
I gotta see how much I can waste my time.
Well, to my adult life, I not love the dark skies ordinance. Uh, but I would, uh, absolutely be in favor of allocating twenty thousand dollars towards dark skies compliance if it was specifically for picture to picture and a receipt to
Right.
change people's lives.
Yes.
Along with that.
Yes.
I one hundred percent support casting that net wide and sending a letter out to everyone that says this is a program we will be initiating. A postcard or whatever the smaller amount was gonna be pointed to. Uh, dark skies ordinance brings hundreds of tourists into our area. And I hate it, but it does what it, man, people love that thing.
So I think, Mike, back to the Abe's point, though, we have three thousand dollars to consider at the next meeting.
Yeah, we'll, we'll talk about the bigger number later, but I, I know that in the budget is three K, so.
Okay.
Future thoughts?
All right, any discussion? Any other discussion on this one? And I guess Commissioner Hadeen, you will bring this forward at the next meeting.
Yes, I'll work on it. Yeah, I'll see what, I mean, it's a start.
I have one comment. Under six, so when we were on the boat with all of the Colorado River Authority people, all they were trying to do is take pictures of the stars. I mean, we were on the river, cause of course it's dark, there wasn't a lot of traffic. And, but they're like, I hate this, I can't take pictures because then it wants to make it look like daytime. But you know, they were all trying to take pictures of.
The stars he both mentioned, yeah.
I show, I show hundreds of people every single night. You can look up, see the Milky Way in our area and people attend year after year for that thing. And I hate that Main Street isn't blindingly lit at all times. But this is a future conversation.
All right, thank you. So if we're done, then we'll move on to the next one, the special events discussion. And Melody, would you handle this? Take a quick break.
So this was originally supposed to be workshop, so it'll basically be that tonight. We'd like to talk about it, make some changes. There's a red line, um, in here with Jenny Beth's recommendations, which I really liked, so I had them added. So I asked Stephen to put them into a red line and then Mike has some comments here and I'm gonna let him go ahead and start off the conversation with his, his comments in there. That way he can explain to them.
And Commissioner, just so you guys know, Angie's online as well.
And Angie's online, but we don't have Jenny Beth?
No.
No, okay.
I have, uh, started the conversation.
The meeting's still going. I don't know what this.
Yeah, I was like.
Everything's still going, everybody's, we're all still on YouTube.
Uh, my Quichmill was here, uh, I'm gonna read through it here. Definition of a special event per our county website. If you want that, uh, you can look it up. But it lists exemptions, non-commercial, non-competitive, family, friends, or youth events such as weddings, family reunions, dances, parties, or garage sales with less than two hundred and fifty daily total attendance and fifty motor vehicles, conferences, trainings, lectures, sporting events, or similar similar held events in a permitted, permanent facility consistent with the facility's occupancy and design standards. Community events owned or sponsored by resolution by the Grand County, by the Grand County at Grand County owned facilities. Uh, to add to the list of uh, section eight point one six point oh four oh exemptions. A special event shall not include, again, a non-commercial, non-competitive family events or youth events such as weddings, family reunions, dances, parties, or garage sales with less than five hundred daily total attendance or sixty five motor vehicles.
Mike, true, okay.
Well, we go ahead.
Do, is it just, so what you're, I, I was just a little confused. So you're kind of saying you want to replace those numbers in the current exemptions with what you were just reading? Is that, is that?
All right, I do believe. Okay, didn't, didn't we vote on helping the vehicle amounts and the people?
It's already in there. It's a hundred motor vehicle, not sixty five. So your language, maybe you had an open.
We, well, we, I thought we settled on sixty five. We, we compromised on sixty five. I thought, I thought we, we did do that. I, I clearly remember having a lot of back and forth.
Yeah, okay, even if we did, or when we did, it's not on the county website. Which event hosts are looking at. So that needs to get fixed.
Absolutely.
Uh, but it's already a non, or A, already exists. B, conferences, trainings, lectures, sporting events, or similar events held in a per permitted, permanent facility consistent with the facility's occupancy and and C and design standards. Community events owned or sponsored by resolution by the county, county owned. And the, the one I was looking to add, and this will continue with conversations with, uh, uh, Stephen Stox's office here.
Yeah.
Uh, is special events held at county facilities as defined in section eight point one six point oh three oh, which are organized and approved by the facilities director and which do not require the closure of public rights of way outside the facility's property. So the explanation of that would be just alignment with existing policy. And, uh, again, I, I know that contained events, uh, contained events were always were always contentious item with OSTA in its sense. But, uh, it's really hard to, as an event promoter, to walk the line of, I have a ten year permit from BLM outside of, outside of OSTA's facility. And I, it, it's a hard alignment, uh, process with a one year uh, a one year approval process of applying for that ten year permit from a BLM to align with the county's uh, year to year, uh, non, or not looking at as an exemption, alignment with the existing policy. Uh, would, wouldn't be a LMS if they don't close the roadway or impact the impact people on the roadway. I, I don't want to, and the facility, be it OSTA, be it the Grand Center, be it anything, if they have an open timeline, I think that the facilities director should be able to, uh, make that call just as good as. I, I mean, I don't have the, the mastery that, uh, that Angie has at OSTA. I don't have
Yeah.
what the Grand Center's mastery of the facilities of, of the Grand Center, that the director has.
Yeah.
Uh, I wouldn't mock my politics uh, to be the deciding factor, when, especially when BLM already decided ten years in advance that they have a ten year running permit on an event, be it a run event, be it a paint rocks event. I mean, it, this is unbiased on that.
Mike, a couple of things. I know the county attorney wants.
Please, cause we, we're ordering to schedule time to talk.
I'd like to just make the comment that Dana has volunteered to speak to anything regarding Jenna Beth's portion of this. If we would like her to join us, she said she would.
Okay, so you've got proposed changes by Commissioner McCurdy. You got that document, right?
Yep.
Thanks. And then item D, it says special events held at county facilities. And then it says which organ is approved by the facilities director, do not require the closure of public right ways, right? I'm going with you there. Is that meaning as an anchor location or are you meaning that are wholly contained? Because the big.
Anchor location.
Okay, then you probably would need to specify on, on D, it would probably need to say like special events with an anchor location at, then you're gonna have to define anchor location at the county facilities. I, I think that's, that's critical. Then the next question, and again, this is why we're in the discussion phase. Um, the next question is, do you, are you limiting, are you gonna classify events that have like a BLM permit? Like those that have BLM permits that are gonna go out on those, those? And you say, hey, this is a different class than the ones that are gonna go out and ride on slick rock versus the ones that are gonna go ride out the booty, booties. Is there a differentiation between any of those? And if the answer is no.
I, I wouldn't put a differentiation between any of those.
Okay, so then it's just merely if they have an anchor location at the, at OSTA. And again, my, my brain's doomsday scenario. So what does that tell? Does that mean that they have, you know, a conference there? Does that mean that they have dinner there? Does that mean? Cause what, if I'm an evil, you know, event holder, uh, then I just say, I'll pay the deposit. I'll be there for one minute and now I have a special event in Grand County.
Right.
So we wanna work, we wanna make sure and work through like so that the evil special event creator doesn't just book a small room in OSTA and have a thousand person UTV run. Not, okay, they would do that, but that's, those are some of the things to flesh out.
Okay, I'm gonna go to Jacques and then Trish.
Thank you. Yeah, Stephen did actually clarify one of my questions. So I just wanna get everything put, so so Jenny Beth's portion, we're literally, that to me, when I read through that, that is literally just changing timelines. Is that correct? Okay.
And I, and I'm in favor of that.
Okay, that's, that's cool. Yeah, no, I don't, I. Yeah, I, I think so too. So then.
Put them all, all Jenny Beth's, put them in the red line. That part's done.
Yeah, thank you. So the next one I was a little confused about, uh, because yeah, yeah, there's exceptions. So basically, literally the only new thing here is D. Is that correct? Otherwise, it's all stuff that's been passed. As Mike said, it might not be on the website, so that's just a matter of, uh, somebody getting the proper information on the website, right?
I think.
Okay, and then, and then Stephen did clarify some of that, but to, to, I also think that's the anchor location, even if it's not an evil event holder, if it, it could be a massive event. Um, they have BLM permits, but they're still gonna be using public roads, they're gonna be using Grand County infrastructure, they're gonna, they're gonna be using public safety, they're gonna be using, um, you know, things that are in the public domain that, that, that could far exceed the scope of simply having an event at um, OSTA and, uh, spending time on, on roads that BLM deems appropriate. So that, I, that I'm much less comfortable with. Um, I'm fine with Jenny Beth's section. I think that's cool. I think getting the information on the website's cool. Um, um, as it's, as I read, I'm not in favor of, of D, I don't think, but I could be liable to, to changes.
So transition that melody.
I think I'm going in the same direction and Angie, you know that I love you and all that you do out there, but I, I, I guess I think about the repercussions too. Like I know that some of the discussions we've had in the past is just like purely equestrian events that are totally held at OSTA and those kind of things I think I'm fine with. But when we talk about, you know, and I'm not picking on the motorized, but, but, but the reality is when you have a thousand UTVs, it does reverberate through the entire valley. And there are impacts outside of OSTA. So I guess I'm I'm a little more reticent to do something like that. And I do appreciate the context that you put it in, cause I didn't really think about it in that manner, but it, it, it could, it could go in that direction. So I, I do think we need to think outside the box, like what are the what ifs? Um, and the repercussions of those what ifs and the impacts to the community. So maybe we can kind of work on that a little bit, if you're down with that.
That's why I really wanted a workshop.
Yeah.
Kinda got thrown to the side.
Yeah.
Okay.
You know, we're gonna be here till good time, cause I would like to put this as a, I would like to have this as an ordinance to vote on next meeting, so move along with this. And I want it done right and I didn't, don't wanna rush it, but, so we did swap it, but it's gonna be talked about. Anyways, here's my things that I have, um, the pre-authored list, which we call the legacy list. Um, I, I don't, I have a list of those items, but it doesn't really give me the parameters around it and I don't see anything in the ordinance that's listed in here that talks about, like, what are the parameters around the legacy list? And then how often do we update that? I mean, I would love to see all the Mad Moose ones. She has one, two, three, four, five, six total. Yeah, Canyonland's half marathon is, is on the legacy list, but all, I think all six of those should just go on there. She has ten year BLM. I mean, they're all running events. They've been happening for nine years, nineteen years, um, eleven years, fifteen years and twelve years. I mean, I just think that she's definitely they, they have definitely earned that spot on that legacy's list. So I don't know when we, when we update that, but I would like to see that happen and kind of have a little bit more clarity around that, just cause I don't know, um, when we, when we look at those. And, um, I think that that eighteen month, that were, the red line that we talked about, the eighteen month needs to be for OSTA as well at, for any event. I mean, it needs to be OSTA event, so people can't book out OSTA two years in advance. Um, it's, so the eighteen month that would be changing right now from twelve to eighteen is gonna be across the board. And, and I'd like to see a deposit, what, what are deposit structures? So there must be some kind of a deposit structure, but so that we don't have people just booking it and then backing out. So there's a, you know, when you book it, you have a, a non-refundable fee, number one. And then, and then there'll be different levels of like the sooner you back it, you know, whatever. I mean, maybe there's a, you pay two thousand is non-refundable, but if you, if you, um, cancel within a certain amount of time, then you get and I don't know what the fees are even are for renting OSTA, but you know, if it's ten thousand dollars rent OSTA, then you pay X, you know, five thousand dollar fee when you book it. And if you cancel within those first, you know, the two thousand of it is non-refundable, period. You know, because if you're gonna do an event, you need to be serious about it and not be taking the time from some other event, event, you know, um, so that's something. And then I think that we need one calendar for sure. I don't necessarily know that we, we leave it only to Angie. I think that it's really important for Angie and Jenna Beth to work hand in hand with these. Um, I think it's super important, but they both need to be involved and they, and, um, anyways, one calendar so that somebody could call out to, to Angie and ask if it was available and she would know and so would Jenny Beth know. I mean, either way, cause people contacting both. Then I'll still, let's see, I know that, um, we have marketing money that comes from MTAB and that there's grants that they give out and they haven't given those out yet this year and they have a subcommittee that's working on those, but you know, maybe we need to have some kind of an application period in the fourth quarter and it's due by January first and that way all that can go to the MTAB board so that they. And it's due by January first, and that way all that can go to the MTAB board so that they can plan their marketing grant. Um out accordingly, and so that's, I mean, I don't necessarily know if that goes in the this ordinance, but. It'd be a piece, and I think that might be all of my. Thoughts on.
I'm gonna go to the county attorney, then Brian, then Mike, okay.
More more fun thoughts of my life. The second that you guys make any changes. To ex- make an exception by utilizing Osta. You increase the value of having your event at Osta substantially. So a thought for looking at fee schedules or anything else, if you can purchase, basically, if you get your foot in at Osta. You're gonna have a holding ticket to having an event, so it's going to make those. Those that that desire to be out at Osta on certain weekends, you probably, it would probably. Who the county to consider adjusting your fee schedules based on that. So. Brian, Quinn, Quinn wanted.
Well, you're sorry, I didn't know, I just wanna say we. The grants program, and I think I've talked to Brian about this, but we need to fix that. Because it's too late in the year, it needs to be have the application process in the fall. And I would like MTAB to kind of run point on this to the to the. Level that they're able or willing. Because we do those and they end up being reimbursement grants, which is a. It's not a best practice, it's a it's a poor process. So I'd like to see the application happen in the fall. It'll be awarded in January for the upcoming year, and then we just cut those checks as they come, just food for thought.
So I'm gonna go Brian. I see and I see Angie. Okay, go ahead Angie, and then we'll go Brian, Mike. Can you hear us, Angie?
Yeah, I hear you, can you hear me?
Yep, please go ahead.
Um first, I wanna start with saying I completely agree with Quinn, um. It's a huge disadvantage for the event holders with the way it's set up right now. Uh because they really need the money beforehand, um so that would. What Quinn said is spot on, if we could get that change, that would be a huge benefit for those event holders. Uh and if Jenny, Beth and myself could be a part of that, that would be awesome, because. We're the ones that are working hand in hand with the event holders and we're the ones who know. Um who needs what, and I've been seeing that um. Some events have been getting that repeatedly and it's, I don't think being used appropriately, but those are just my thoughts. On that, um the other thing to what um Commissioner McCandless was saying, um. Osta already does have a lot of those things implemented, um we do already have security deposits. In effect, um it is non-refundable if. Events are canceled within thirty day uh thirty days before the event. Um there was a couple of other items, um as far as the calendar. Um it would be hard to have just one calendar, just because Osta is so complex with. Different things, um but I would be, I'm totally apt to sharing a calendar, um. And then maybe like as. Events are booking, they coming in. Uh part of a application process is to like verify if the date's like available with me. Like going through the application, um but as far as the two. Only going out like eighteen months, that would be a huge disadvantage for a lot of the events, just because. Most of my events are legacy events, they've been going on for. Like decades, uh. So. Um yeah, I don't, I I disagree with that, um I think I would lose events if they lost that security. Of not knowing that they had their dates, because a lot of those dates just roll over and they they have those guaranteed dates. Trying to think of what else, but that's what I have for right now.
Thank you, all right, Brian, then Mike.
So, yeah, I mean. My general thoughts is, and I don't know what your calendar looks like, but. What I see is is we're trying to, or I'd like to see, you know, us get more use out of the Osta uh facilities. Right, and what can we do to better? To better the process so that we can bring more events inside there and keep and keep and keep those facilities moving a little bit more. Um couple of things that I've noticed, you know, the one calendar, this idea. Um you know, a shared calendar, I think would work, however it is, I'm not saying one person would have control over the other person. Definitely a shared calendar where you go, someone contacts you and you look on the calendar and you see four things happening. And you go, oh, you might wanna talk to Jenny Beth first, and same thing otherwise, you know, when Jenny Beth looks on her calendar, she goes, oh, man, look what's gonna be happening at Osta. You better go contact them first before we know, so whatever it is, I do think that there's a lot in the, you know. That could be accomplished just by communication between between the two right there. Um second, the idea of a deposit, um you know, I mean, I I I saw this in the the maze district of Canyonlands, and I thought it was one of their big misses. Is when they opened up the reservations to people out there and they never raised the deposit. Right, I mean, like a dep- a a a severe deposit means that you're signi- you're serious about, you're serious about doing it, and I think that. With something like this, that we need to have a a a deposit that that matches. You know, the the level of intent, right, for something like that, if I'm if I'm hosting a five thousand person event. Right, and the deposit's two hundred and fifty dollars and it's refundable up to thirty days, right, that's 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 the same thing like in the maze. You know, I we we see people out there and they'll book every single campsite, because they don't know where they wanna go, and it's only a twenty dollar deposit. Right, it's 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 not, it the um the fee doesn't match. The uh the level of intent that I think that they need to be putting in there. Um the second thing is is this. The the way that the calendars kind of line up, so and and I I might need a little bit of uh uh education on this. So if I wanted to book a uh uh an event, I called you up and I said, I wanna book. Um for August of twenty twenty six, could I make a reservation for that? Yeah, could I could could, how far in advance can I make my reservations at Osta?
Yeah, yeah, you could do that, because I could I could tell you right now, like. What everything's looking like as far as. Repeat events.
Yeah.
Like I I know when Jeep Safari is, I know when Cruise Moab is, I. I know when all those repeat events are, so I know what weekends are available.
But what I'm saying is, is so I could make that event, yet we you couldn't go ahead and apply for a. High impact, a high impact um. Uh uh permit to go out there until even under this new one, under eighteen months. So I don't, you should be allowing anything that's not legacy, right, at high impacts to be out there, because that's just, that's just the way to game the system. Right, I could go ahead and say, oh, yeah, great, I already got my Osta per- permit, right, or I already have my Osta reservation, and now. Anybody who calls you is gonna say, or anybody who calls Jenny Beth, oh, look, sorry, Osta's already taken right now. Right, and and that event might not even get, that my event might not get passed, right, it just blocked everybody else out from coming, so. I would think that we'd wanna have our um whatever our. Our window is for for approving events to be the same as our window for making advanced reservations. Something something some somewhere similar on that, um. And and I I don't know, and there might be. I don't, what I don't wanna create is I don't wanna create a um. Something that's gonna create more restrictions, but I do see that as a problem right there, is having two different, two different windows right there. And then the other thing is 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 I do think that there should be some sort of appeal process as well. Right, and and that I have not seen in there, there should be a way that, let's say that I call in and. And I try to get this reservation and you're like, well, I don't know if it's gonna happen, there should be some sort of appeal process to where I think. Uh uh admin is brought in as the as the authority or. I I don't think it should come up to the level as the commission, but I do think that we should have some way to make sure that that. That all things have been looked at before they come back up to us, if that makes any sense to everybody.
I like that. Okay, Mike, you were next, I apologize.
Some of you are more nefarious than myself uh in this discussion, thank you for. Or at least thinking in nefarious path, uh I I'm trying to take this all in to make this more streamlined for. Uh again, for the 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 need of a workshop, so I will be getting with Stephen's docs, uh and. Honestly, uh his office and taking that all in. I am trying to get this uh applied to our next meeting, uh but in the same sense. Uh I really wanna pose a a a non too nefarious question here, uh. Angie gets Jeep Safari. Jeep Safari is coming the end of April, uh like all or it it's rotated the end of April, they cancel. They cancel three months out, they paid the deposit, they take that hit, so be it. Why doesn't Angie? Why doesn't Angie have the capability to turn to? FJ uh or Toyota-thon and say Toyota-thon. Or Toyota-thon walks up to Angie and goes, we wanna hold a twenty thousand person event, we wanna have the X amount of vehicle, same amount of vehicles that Jeep Safari has. On your property the same way as Jeep Safari does. And not just go, yeah, the spot's open, why can't Angie just pull that trigger?
Hey, county attorney, so. This is, this is not exactly a workshop, but it's a discussion, folks have mentioned that maybe we're gonna see this next time, ready to go and you could vote it on. And everything. Is is what's there, and and I don't. Right, and if that's gonna be the case, I think it'd be really great if you guys. I know I don't wanna force the issue of of having too much discussion on this, but if the if that's something that's gonna come up about anchor locations and things like that. Even if it's not tonight, maybe you guys should try to communicate, of course, you can't predetermine the outcome of a meeting. But it would be great to have some progress and communicate so that you guys. When you roll around to the next meeting. It's not all just. It's an instant shock, because that's that's what's going on.
Related an email between us all, okay?
No.
That that's that's the up, that's the answer.
But you can, you can talk with like when. When um a commissioner creates a letter, it has input, and so when you're when you're thinking about these things to to communicate with each other. In non-quorum functions and and. I don't know, what what I'm worrying is, we're gonna show up next time, we're gonna have Mike's idea of what it is, and then. We're not gonna have a any work on it, so. The idea of an anchor location, for example. You guys wanna kind of go into it now, or if if I'm overstepping, you guys don't wanna do that, that's fine, I'm just trying to. Flesh some of these details out sooner from now rather than the night we vote on it, and then I have to frantically try to make some edits to document.
I don't, I don't think we're ready for a vote next meeting personally, I mean, maybe.
Not all of it.
But we made some really good progress. Some really good ideas.
Two seconds, I really worry. Specifically to this year. It's already without the capability of the Osta director or another county facilities director. To fill vacancies. We're losing. Money this year. We're losing income this year, it hurts us even more. Hooray for the policy and for streaming line this, I hope it gets better next year, but we're already losing money of not being able to fill.
I I see you there, Angie, just let me go for a minute if you would, so then maybe the answer is that a couple of you. Work with the county attorney.
I could use him.
And then this maybe could go on the next meeting if he feels comfortable and then it could be circulated, I mean, I I. At least I would think people would nod or say. But I wanna go to Angie first, Trish, she's waiting.
Um I just wanted to follow back up to um Commissioner Martinez's question. Um as far as calling Osta and booking. The facility, um before anybody could just book the facility, there's a bunch of questions that are asked, and especially if it's somebody new that's coming in. Um I always encourage a site visit and go through, because there's certain events that can't happen, um. On. Specific pieces of the property, like a motocross race coming into the indoor arena, yeah, that's not gonna happen. Um it's just really bad for the soil and. Motocross with equestrian, we've tried it before, it doesn't work, it damages. The facility way too much and. It's, it doesn't work, now the outdoor arena, yeah, we could probably do something like that out there, um. So there's different parts of the property that could work for different things, so I always encourage. The event producer to come to the facility and us walk through their event together and figure out what's gonna work best. Um but for somebody just to call up and say, hey, I wanna do this event, that that booking hardly ever happens. Um it's usually a meeting, walk through, get a fill for them, get to know them, um. Like raves, big parties like that, I just. You know, there's there's dynamics, there's things that are just. Um. I I don't have staffing for. Uh policing, all kinds of fun stuff, so. There's just events that just don't get to come in without. Um logistics happening first, um so I wanted to clarify that.
Thank you, Trish, and then Mel.
Make a recommendation that maybe, and I'm not telling you guys what to do, but maybe Angie. Mike and Stephen do a rough draft and then send it out to us and allow us to make comments. And and you guys can take those comments or not, do what you want, but but it might help facilitate that final draft. You gave us a couple of days before you put it on the agenda, are you guys down with something like that?
Yeah, I'd like to help too.
I know we've been.
Yeah, melody is not done, yeah.
So I'd like to help with that as well, and then um Angie, so. The I don't think that our list has your like leg- legacy list, so I think it's important for you to get that to us, so I think those need to be, because. You said it would hurt. And I and that is, we want those ones that are that have their spot to have their spot, but then outside of that, um to be in that timeframe. So that everybody's working on that same same level, but we we don't wanna. Lose our legacy ones, and then the other thing also is I don't wanna have anything outside of that eighteen months, like to be had, we had people come in to have exceptions, like, oh, I'm. Outside of the timeline, I think we hold s- we hold firm to that. We have legacy events that are that are in there, and then we have the eighteen month cutoff, and we do not allow. Anything outside of that, but that those are just some of my comments, we can add them in there, so.
So my, I'm sorry, I just wanted real quick my clarification, so the my events that. Have been around for a long time that I am worried about, those would be like my legacy events.
Yep.
Okay.
One legacy list.
Okay, Mary, and then uh my favorite, thanks Trish's suggestion.
I'm just wondering, uh. You, Mike said that he was concerned that there were certain ones that were happening this year, that were gonna be losing money. I mean, I wonder if for immediate future. So we don't just rush through things, not have them done really. Feated in a really solid fashion where we're not gonna have to be going back and fixing it, is to just look at those situations. Where. We are, that Angie. You know, I don't know the exact thing that's causing it, but Angie doesn't have the choice, or you you know, somehow it's breaking down. For immediate or for quick, you know, for next meeting, maybe just look at that. Just look at that, so we fix that, so we're not losing the money for the rest of the year. And then have a really long ter- uh. You know, uh ta- taking another, a little more time to just make sure. That it's written in a way that we don't have to come back later and go, ooh. You know, that there's some time that we have time to digest it and look at it, that's my suggestion, I think that's. Uh a better way to do it than to try to hurry and get this done. Like in two weeks, let's just look at the ones that we have to serve out.
Angie, I'll be getting with you uh ASAP.
Okay.
And. Uh give, if you could give with Angie, give with Angie, draft it up, I don't. I don't care what's there for, you know, I'm not looking for content, you guys set the content, I'll tell you how somebody will. Make it not as great, and then I can point out those.
I can see some of the holes that you pointed out, so thank you.
Yeah, and then and you guys can circulate it for the the commissioners, I just. The the difficulty is when we go through these ordinances and we set them up to make a change, if we get all the way to the point of making a change. And then we don't have support from the commission, or if we really wanna make some last minute changes, it just gets really tricky.
With that, is it okay for? I'll have uh Mark there too, but is it okay for me to talk to Angie about this?
This is.
Because this is, I'm I'm not trying to direct staff, I'm trying to get information.
That that the commission has brought forward in a meeting, every single commissioner knows exactly what you're doing, this is a very appropriate way to communicate with staff.
Okay.
Okay, are we ready for a motion to go into closed session?
The lease exchange, purchase or sale of real property and pending or reasonable and the imminent litigation.
All in favor? Passes unanimously.
We're gonna make some pickle of this. We're gonna make some pickable events that are.